I'm calling the meeting to order with my gavel there. It is five o'clock and we don't have to do recorder because it's being recorded, right? Yeah, okay. Laurlee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard. Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumble.
Aye.
Thank you Laurlee. And Stu, please lead us in the pledge.
The flag is back here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Stu. First thing we have to do is approve our agenda for tonight. So are there any changes or corrections to the agenda for tonight's meeting? Hearing none, I will take a-
Actually, I don't have a legislative report. I left it on the agenda.
Okay, that's fine.
Just in case something would happen at the State House or with some legislator that I needed to report. So I'll probably do that in October and November and December as well. We can just leave it on the agenda. And if I have something to say about it, I'll say about it.
Okay, thank you, Stu.
Yep.
All right, so I don't think that's a correction. I think it's just an informational piece.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Have a first from Pam and a second from Amy. I mean, from Dawn. That's fine. It's usually Dawn and Pam that are doing it. So take the upgrade, it's great. Go ahead. It would be Dawn and Amy.
Which one did which?
First, Dawn did the first and then Amy did the second. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
We got a little silly. All right. Laurlee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Pam Howard. Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessin.
Aye.
Nancy Rumble.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And the motion passes. Six to zero. We are on the school presentations. We have Coyote Ridge here with us tonight. So we're excited to hear a little bit about what's happening. We appreciate having our point ahead of time. That gives us a chance to become a little bit familiar. So thank you.
Sure, thank you.
I'm gonna stand real close to them.
Well, good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer and members of Cabinet and public. Appreciate the opportunity to present here at Coyote Ridge one of the things we know, as well as to host. And one of the things we know is that everyone likes to see the kids. That's, I think that's true. And what's also true is, because I think this early in the year, we decided not to kind of freak our teachers out with their brand new classes and decided to do a little different presentation this time. And we've had the privilege of presenting about IB. We're an international backdoor at school. And so those are things that we've always talked about in our presentation. You know, what an IB experience is for students, the IB principles and philosophy behind it. And today, we wanted to really kind of help make the connection between between IB and rigor and academics that come along with school or that comprise school. And so, as you know, the science of reading is initiative and professional development and learning that we've been doing for several years as a school and as a district. And so we wanted to make some connections between the science of reading and putting theory into practice here at Coyote Ridge, how that connects with IB, as well as with the greater district mission and vision. Speaking of which, this is, we want to make the connection to STRIVE 2025. Literacy instruction at Coyote Ridge supports STRIVE 2025, focus area one, student achievement using evidence-based practices in literacy instruction, looking to increase student achievement and growth and increase the number of students that are making their proficiency at the end of their grade.
All right, so I'm Jennifer Bozick. I'm our IB program coordinator. And my other hat is I'm one of our literacy interventionists. So this is sort of the nexus of my two roles here with the IB and also literacy. So in the past, we really enjoy presenting for you about action and inquiry and student agency and service. We're doing, we're still doing all of those things. All of that's happening. But something we've also discovered on our journey to become more knowledgeable about the science of reading is really we need to match our instruction to the purpose. And what we have learned and we deeply believe is the best way to teach kids their foundational literacy skills is through systematic, direct, explicit instruction. And that still has a very important place within an IB world school. In fact, there are numerous IB standards and practices related to student achievement, to goal setting, to differentiation, to assessment. And so we're accountable for all of those standards of practices as well as an IB world school. And I just want to just like, just a couple of examples from the standards of practices that were evaluated on.
So this, this image you've likely seen before, this is the RTI or MTSS triangle that illustrates, you know, what typical distributions look like and how students receive and need support at different levels. And so Jennifer, we're going to talk about what those levels of support look like at our school. And so this is kind of just a big picture. Also, I realize how rude of me to not introduce my wonderful teachers, Jennifer Bozick, Rodney Nivower. As Jennifer introduced herself, IB coordinator and instructional coach. I apologize, Jennifer. Rodney Nivower is IB coordinator and interventionist. Riley's our instructional coach and also interventionist.
All right, so he mentioned a little bit those tiers, the levels of instruction. And so we have, within that framework, the multi-tiered systems of support. We have that tier one, that universal where all students sort of receive that instruction. And then tier two is when we think about it as layers. We have the tier one where all students will receive and then tier two builds on that. So if a kiddo is not getting this, what can we do to provide support so that they do get it? If they're still not getting it here, then where's that third layer of support? So we'll talk a little bit about what this might look like. So tier one, best first instruction. I'm going to talk a little bit about what that looks like and some of the changes that we've made over the last six years with our literacy instruction. Tier two could be in-class, could be a small group, could be push-in, push-out. In our building, both Jennifer and I are interventionists, but we also have a reading corps, which is an amazing AmeriCorps program that we have really benefited from significantly over the last few years. And now math corps as well. But we're mostly talking about literacy today. And then tier three, and with math corps or with reading corps, we've been able to actually provide a layer for some of those kiddos who are just not getting it. So a kiddo might be in the universal in-classroom instruction, not getting letter names, letter sounds. We might come in as an interventionist and have a small group. But then we can also use reading corps for a third layer on top of that to really support those kiddos and their needs. And so just a little bit of background knowledge, that best first instruction in literacy. Our district, the last three years, we've really been talking about the science of reading. Our building, about six years ago, started to go through a pretty big transformation. We did a book study on overcoming dyslexia and learned a great deal about how kids learn how to read. And so when we're talking about those multi-layered systems of support, first what needs to happen is that best first instruction. We need to know what we're doing and how we can support our kiddos with their reading development. So this is one model Scarborough's Reading Rope. I honestly could talk to you about this for hours. So I'm going to really try hard to tone it down. But, and I just kind of want to point out a couple of things in here. So with Scarborough's Reading Rope, we've got the language comprehension strands, background knowledge, vocabulary, the language structures, that grammar piece, verbal reasoning and literacy knowledge. So all of those things are interwoven and may become increasingly more strategic as the kids develop skills and move on. This is really important. Our background knowledge, our science and social studies is key for kids to get that background knowledge so they understand what they're reading, right? This is that whole comprehension piece. Arguments of inquiry. We spent a great deal of time writing our units of inquiry to build that background knowledge and for it to be threaded so beautifully together across multi- about, across multi-
Disseminaries.
Thank you.
If you want to see our units of inquiry on your way out, you'll see a giant quilt. So it's a quilt that has pieces of paper inside pockets. That's actually our, those are our units of inquiry on a wall. So it's a roadmap of what students here learn from preschool all the way through fifth grade. And that is what it means to be an IB primary years program school. It's teaching through the lens of those units of inquiry. So when Riley talks about the language comprehension strands coming through our units, that is what we've developed as an IB world school. And it's a requirement that we have it on public display. So, you know, we had our construction over the summer. And so everything came down and we're so excited the quilt went back up this week. So on your way out, please do take me.
And just the students and resources. A lot of our ready gen curriculum lives in these language comprehension strands, our science and social studies resources. But down here, we've got that word recognition piece, that phonological awareness, the decoding, the sight recognition. And when you think about these strands, these become, need to become increasingly more automatic so that kids can read fluently, right? And so all of these, I love this model because it just beautifully brings all of these skills necessary for kiddos to become skilled readers and spellers. These foundational skills, we use our Wilson Foundations programs. Again, bright resources. So wanting to make sure that we know about that first layer of intervention because we cannot intervene unless we have a solid tier one. And so then, when we think about those tiers of support in a highly targeted manner, so we can look at those specific skills and identify what kids need. And then we can, within that framework, use our special educators. We can extend with GT. We have our student success teams. If a kid is still not getting it, can we come together as a group and figure out what else might we be able to do for them? Those parent partnerships and then our flooding model. And then assessments too, learning and knowing. How do we know if they don't have a decoding skill? How do we know if they're struggling in phonological awareness? And then hugely important is collaboration. We can't do this unless we can work together. I think I might have stolen your slide.
You might have stolen my slide.
I'm sorry.
You are a roll.
I was so excited. So flooding is the way in which we can provide those structured supports for students throughout the day because we don't want to pull them from that tier one instruction. We want to make sure that they get that because we can't intervene unless they've already had that piece. And so we wanted to share with you our master schedule because so many kids are going so many places. It's important for you to know the systems that are in place in order for this to happen. So this is our master schedule. This is, and I'm just going to give you a brief overview of this, where our specialists are during our plan time. The reason this is important is because this is when we can meet with teens and have those collaborative conversations. And then the flooding block down here, we need to be strategic about when we're pulling kids so Rodney can generate, and can meet with multiple grade levels and others that are learning center. But also, it doesn't interfere with their plan time and all of that. So then if you just click on instructional schedules and then teachers can build their instructional schedules around those big chunks to allow for collaboration, planning, and for us to be able to work in small groups. In order for any of these groups to happen, this collaboration is key. PLCs, our professional learning communities, when we get together and have those data conversations, we're kind of in the process of that right now. And one of the ways that we can do that is those, the time that we have together and also our beta spreadsheet. So if you look at that, this is a way for us to have ongoing communication throughout. And so you'll notice that this is a fourth grade classroom from last year. This teacher, and this is, there's multiple tabs at the bottom, is keeping track of the data. And then we come together, our intervention team, if you click on that one, will identify students that need support and we might have additional assessments to try and figure out what are their needs, how can they make growth in those areas? And then if you click on this reading intervention cycle, and then we come together and create goals around those specific kids, the specific skills that they need and how are they making progress?
All right, so as I mentioned, the IB keeps us accountable for using assessments to drive our instruction and also just making sure that we're meeting student needs. It's also an IB expectation that we are continuing to grow and learn as a school and become just the best IB world school we can every day. As we certainly read more things or new things come out, making sure that we're continuing to adopt best practices. So every IB world school is required to participate in sort of systematic reflection. And so we are all required to create what's called the program development plan, which is like a mini school unified improvement plan just for your IB implementation. And it can be about anything. It could be about any implementation, you know, challenge or something new you'd like to incorporate into your IB program. For the last two years, we've been working on really aligning science of reading and within an IB context. So exactly what we've been showing you that we've been working on. And we're really excited about this work because as I said, we really do feel like direct systematic instruction is the best way to teach those foundational literacy skills so they can access all of the wonderful, rich texts that are part of our units of inquiry. This really to provide that access for our students. So we created a goal and our program development plan needs to have really specific SMART-type goals on that show that we've succeeded in implementing our goal. So our goal in kindergarten was on the FAST A reading assessment that 90% of students would be in the low-risk range by the end of kindergarten. And we exceeded that goal. We were able to hit 93% last spring. So that was a celebration for us. In first through fifth grade, it looked a little bit different because we don't use FAST reading. It was around our end-of-the-year I-Ready reading data and some specific sub-areas. So the goal for first through fifth grade was that the percentage of students who score in the grade level range on I-Ready would increase, specifically in phonics, phonemic awareness and high-frequency words. So those were really the areas that we've been targeting over the last couple of years. And you can see here, we put in our beginning of the year and our end-of-the-year data. Just did a screenshot from I-Ready. Riley, did you want to talk a little more about?
No, I just wanted to revert back to those small groups that we identified and worked with. These were some of those targeted skill areas that we were focusing on. So this is why we wanted to make sure that we were communicating with our IB, with our IB program development plan also, about how that was looking.
So in the area of phonics, this is first through fifth grade on I-Ready. Our goal was 80% would score grade level or above and we exceeded that goal. So 86% of our students were proficient in phonics by the end of the year last year. The next area was phonemic awareness. Goal was 90% and we exceeded that. We're at 95% of our students. And then finally, with high-frequency words, we wanted them to be at 85% and we exceeded that, 94%. And hopefully you could see at the bottom there. That was quick, I know we're running out of time here. But we also included just screenshots from beginning and end of the year in I-Ready, so you can see what that looks like.
So it's a lot of information. And I can tell you, like, you know, Riley mentioned, like, six years ago, we began the science of reading journey, dyslexia actually. And she and I were at a conference on a Saturday in Denver. And the first time we saw Scarborough's rope, right? Did that make perfect sense to you? No. If you haven't seen it and haven't lived it, the first 20 times we saw it, we kept learning and learning. And she led our school in really developing better understanding and then our whole school just jumped on board. And so we're proud of this work and wanted to make sure that everyone could see that, like, the connection with IB is it's not just the voice and choice and ownership and the philosophy that is so important to us, but it also really impacts our ability to have high academic standards, higher than the outcomes. We've been an IB school for-
Ten years.
Ten years. And, you know, we've been typically, most years, high-growth, high-achievement school. And, you know, there's always little, you know, bumps here and there. But overall, we're proud of the work that we've done and proud of the achievement that our students are able to make. And so thanks for giving us the opportunity to share about that. We can't talk for hours.
Oh, no, you can't.
That's a huge amount of square. He was like, 10 minutes. I meant 10 minutes. So that being said, if you have a lot of questions, we'd be happy to entertain them.
I would just share with everybody that I did the science of reading on my own so that I was, and that Scarborough rope is a part of what the kid, so all the teachers in the district have some familiarity with it and understanding of how important they are. Thank you, you guys. That was great.
All right.
Any other questions?
I'm curious, so two things. One, that data sheet that you brought up.
Mm-hmm.
Is there some way to take the way you have that data sheet and solve your multiple-gradebook problem? Because it had all that stuff there.
Right. This data is actually used for our instructional purposes. And the data for, like, reporting to parents, the standards of different, different things that are reported.
Right, but that concept of how you had that data, that spreadsheet, I don't know if that-
And it does look a little different this year because of our multi-age class. So you'll see, we now have a first, second grade spreadsheet. It's really complicated. So there's one tab for first grade, one tab for second grade, and then each tab has three different teachers because we all share the three kids. So it's definitely a work in progress.
I bet Kelly knows some amazing Excel formula.
We talked prior about, you know, when we're making our groups and we're trying to decide, are we going to make a first grade focus folder? That the, when I was talking about the different groups, you saw the red, orange, we're red, yellow and green. We were grouping students. That's the question, like, do we combine our first and second grade multi-age and have a continuum of skills or do we keep it grade-based, based on those skills? And so we're going to, we're going to be making that decision on Friday.
Friday afternoon.
And then the second, the second thing is, because one of the things is I always look at all of the data. I always see Coyote Ridge, you know, very, up very high. And listening to you talk about the IB, and I'm sure it's probably, would probably come down to resources. But it strikes me that if it's working so well here, why wouldn't we want to replicate it at other schools? Because clearly, it's, it's doing great things. And again, it might come down to money and resources because I know the program comes with a cost, but-
We would want to. We'd love to have some sister IB schools.
We'd love to collaborate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm actually, I can answer that question. Other than to say that, yeah, we do believe in the program strongly. We'd love to have IB sister schools. And there's always a lot of things to consider in those.
Is that common in other districts to have multiple IB?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, like, for example, in Pooter School District, they have five elementary IB schools. And so we don't have a, you know, we don't have a partner here, an elementary school here, but we do partner a lot with the schools in PSD and our IB community. But here in TSD, we are one system, preschool through 12th grade. We do meet with Lucille Irwin in Loveland High on a regular basis. I just sent out a bunch of calendar invites today for some district IB things.
Yeah, and Jennifer's actually a leader in, was called the IB ARMS, IB Association of Rocky Mountain Schools. Basically, from, from New Mexico to Wyoming, all the schools are in a consortium where we meet together quarterly and plan and coordinate and, so that we can get that kind of collaboration.
I think it'd be great if we could figure out how to get that project and then you could collaborate with Thompson IB schools and start Pooter.
I, we'd be all on board. Are there other questions?
Stu?
First, a comment and then a request. Your presentation was excellent. It was very easy to follow and to understand. And my request, I think, is for Melissa. And we won't have time to talk about this now. But I'd be interested to know how prescriptive the science of reading approach or curriculum is. And I don't want to break down school by school. But I'd be interested in knowing what the science of reading instruction looks like kind of across the district, if it's possible to do that. Or maybe each building is very different and that's great too. So I'm just curious as to how much structure is required in the science of reading and how much is actually prescribed. Does that make sense?
I might add one comment on that.
Yeah.
That it's not a, it's not a theory, it's not a curriculum. It's a body of scientific evidence of how kids best learn how to read.
Okay.
And so it's having that knowledge of how do kids learn to read? How do they decode words? What skills need to be in place for them to be able to do that? And so there's lots of strategies and ways you can go about teaching those specific skills, but to know that it's actually a scientific research on how kids learn how to read.
So it's a strategy rather than a curriculum?
It's a body of knowledge.
It's a body of knowledge.
Exactly, than a curriculum or a particular strategy. There's many strategies that could be used that would be supported by the science of reading, by the body of knowledge that is evidence-based.
That makes sense.
And to help students learn.
All right, thank you.
There are different curricula that you can use, you know, that would be more or less aligned with the science of reading. So our district uses Wilson's Foundations, which is very aligned with the science of reading. We really enjoy using it. There are aspects that are prescriptive, but others that there's more, more choice. So the program, we have the freedom to choose the program that best fits the needs. And if you ever want to see it in action, you're welcome to.
Yeah.
We've had visitors before come and they'll watch our small groups and you look up and there's somebody there. And we're always happy to have you here to see.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've learned a lot about science of reading.
Are we good?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
All right. We are going to move into our discussion items and our upcoming board meeting. And as we do this facilitation after the presentations, and we have several of them tonight, we'll do just the round robin. We ask one question, let everybody have a chance versus one person dominating or asking several questions in a row. So we'll just kind of follow in that procedure like what we've done or what we were doing last year. We haven't done it too much this year with where we are. All right, the first one is we're going to have Gordon share with us a little bit more about the, why we're revisiting our Centerra South Urban Renewal Authority.
Thank you, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board, Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. First, just two brief comments. That's the first time I've seen the Scarborough's Reading Rope visual. Fantastic. We have something very similar in school finance, but typically our rope starts very tightly wound and then wraps. And second, thank you for ceding your 15 minutes to my presentation. Okay. Centerra South, you are a tax increment revenue agreement. So the board will, sorry, let me start with this. Alignment with STRIVE 2025. This is one of those areas that really expands out to the entire district. So every property owner within the district needs to have, I think, at least a level of understanding of what this means. So this presentation is hopefully furthering that level of transparency for what the district deals with to, out to every property owner, whether it's commercial, residential, industrial, all of that property within the district boundary. So hopefully this, this presentation will help with that. A bit of history with URAs, not an exhaustive history by any stretch, but within this area. The US 34/Crossroads URA was adopted by the City of Loveland in 2006. You'll hear later on in this that the city has the responsibility You'll hear later on in this that the city has the responsibility for approving or declining or denying any, um, URA. Further, in March of this year, 2023, there was a request brought forward or a proposal brought forward for approval of Centerra South, which if the board will recall, is a small portion of the existing US 34 Crossroads URA that is, um, uh, separated and made its own URA. Um, also in March, there was, um, brought before the board, um, there was, uh, a revenue sharing agreement. And that agreement was adopted by the board in March of this year as well. And then, um, brings us forward to September of 2023. There's a proposed reapproval of the Centerra South Revenue Sharing Agreement. And I'll talk about what the reasons for that is and what is involved there briefly. So the rules and requirements of a URA, um, again, I mentioned that the city is responsible for approving any proposed URA. The Loveland Urban Renewal Area, or LURA as it's referred to, is the governing body that governs any URAs within the district or within the, uh, the city boundaries. So the city approves it and then LURA is the governing board, um, that oversees those, those URAs. All taxing entities within a URA are required to agree on a revenue sharing agreement with the authority, the authority being LURA in this case. And a taxing entity is anybody that's assessing, um, a mill levy rate, uh, or property, not just property taxes, but it could be sales tax, it could be a variety of different, um, tax, tax mechanisms that are being assessed in that URA area. The statute says that any substantial modification of a URA plan requires a reapproval of the revenue sharing agreement by all of the taxing entities. That's the crux of this discussion for the board's consideration. The substantial modification, we'll talk about in just a second as well. Absent a revenue sharing agreement, um, that's negotiated with the, uh, the city or LURA in this case, the authority and the taxing entity have to submit to, um, or, uh, not arbitration, mediation to come to a, an, an agreement that's put in place. All taxing authorities are required to, um, to do that by statute. If anybody's interested in the statutes, Colorado Revised Statutes Title 31, um, sorry, I, I don't have them all rep, all memorized here. Statute 31 dash 25 dash 107 is a particular reference about the mediation, but Title 31 is the, um, Colorado Revised Statute that deals with URAs. The impact, let me back up just a second. So I talked about substantial modification. The substantial modification in this place that is taking, that is occurring or is taking place is in March when this governing body, as well as other governing bodies, adopted a revenue sharing agreement. The county, Laramo County, which is also a taxing entity within the URA boundary, did not have a revenue sharing agreement in place. Subsequent to that, um, the county has been negotiating with LURA, um, the city to come up with a revenue sharing agreement to satisfy statute. That qualifies as the substantial modification to the plan because there's a new taxing, not a new taxing entity, but an existing taxing entity that didn't have an agreement previously that now is being required to do so. That qualifies or triggers the substantial modification caveat and thus brings us back to this point. Um, I will say that the agreement that was adopted in March by this body and that's being proposed right now is identical. There's nothing that has changed within our proposed revenue sharing agreement with, um, with LURA. So the impact of those items, um, on Thompson School District tax revenue, the School Finance Act, um, is the mechanism that's dictated to us by, um, statute as well. That, the, the program funding you'll hear referred to as well. Those 27 mils, moving to 27 mils, we're at 24.36 mils, increasing that by statute again, one mil a year until we reach 27, that's called out in the proposal that we have. Those 27 mils is what would be allocated to LURA and then distributed by LURA to, um, help fund bond payments on improvements to that area, um, by the developer. The mill levy overrides, there's three that the district has in place, 1999 and 2008. We're both capped at a revenue and a mill levy rate perspective. We are well above that cap right now. So any changes to the, the assessed valuation within the district would have to be substantial to bring us down to that level. So there's really no, no impact to the district in that because we're well over the caps there. The 2018 MLO is a fixed mill at 7.6 mils. So as assessed valuation increases, revenue increases. I'll, I'll circle back to that in just a second. The abatements, um, cover any, any refunds or abatements of taxes that the county assessor awards to, uh, businesses, um, property owners that they don't want to, uh, to penalize the district for any adjustments that they make. So abatements is a small mill levy rate, less than one mil typically, that is assessed to, um, property owners as well. And then bonded debt service is the other mill levy that's assigned or assessed by the, the school district. There's the 2005 bond, which is starting, it's, it's nearing its end, it's winding its way down within the next three or four years. That will be off the books and the 2018 bond. So again, um, that's based on the net assessed valuation calculation to arrive at that mill levy rate. So there's no, no, um, impact to the district on that either. A key point that I want to make is any voter approved initiative. So the, the two voter approved initiatives on this page that you see are the mill levy overrides and the bond redemption. All of those mills, um, will be assessed to the property owners within the URA under the agreement. And, um, they get deposited, they, they get assessed to the, to the property owners, sent to the county treasurers, county treasurers send it to LURA, LURA sends it to the school district. So at 100% for those voter approved mill levies, get, uh, cycled back to the district. It's important to note also, um, there's no restrictions on those dollars for the dis, for the, uh, school district, for the board. They can be used at the board's discretion, um, for whatever they want to spend it on and whatever area, um, the board should, meaning geographic area. The current URA, the US 34 Crossroads URA has a similar agreement, but the dollars that are being, um, returned to the district through that agreement have to be used within the URA area and have to be used for capital items. This is a, a difference between the two proposed, uh, revenue sharing agreements. Those dollars can be used anywhere in the district for whatever purposes the board should so choose. So those are the, the, uh, hopefully a somewhat quick overview of what the, um, items are that are, need to be considered by the board, um, for, um, recertification or reapproval of the item that was approved in March.
Thank you, Gordon. Are there questions for Gordon? Start over there and work around. Alexandra?
So my question is just that as far as I know, the county still hasn't come to a final agreement or live, live it, correct?
That is correct.
So if, when they do, like, if it's after this, then will we have to vote again? Or like, how does that work?
No, um, the information that I have, there's no information available for public release on what that, what that agreement is being proposed as, but I can say that I know the county, LURA, the city are all, have been actively involved in negotiations and I have assurances that from all three parties that they're nearing an agreement. But to your question, if that, once that's approved, does that impact this and we will have to circle back again? No. The substantial change or substantial modification is bringing the county in and it really has no bearing on the agreement that we have. So it will not be another substantial modification. That is, the substantial modification is the agreement that the county will come to likely beginning of October.
Okay, so there is no, we, there's no need for us to wait until after that is in place?
That is correct and I have confirmed that with our legal counsel.
Okay.
That was my exact question. And we didn't talk.
To you.
Don?
So I sent something over, you guys all got the RFI. Essentially, I just wanted to make sure that I understood, like, some of that very specific ease. And you just explained it using that layman's terms. It was very helpful. So thank you for integrating that so we could all hear it again. Thank you.
Sure. No question.
Nancy? Okay, I don't have any, thank you very much. You don't have a meeting until October 10th, so I'm sure by then we'll have.
This, this would be, uh, requested to be brought back in front of the board at the September 20th business meeting for consideration of approval.
That LURA doesn't meet until October 10th.
Correct.
Yes, so that's when we'll have, hopefully, yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right.
Thank you, board.
All right. Nice and quick. Nice job.
You didn't even need my old 15 to know.
All right. Discussion item 4.2 is, um, the first reading policy. Oh my gosh, I don't have them all down right. Hold on a minute. I mean, IC, um, dash. Is it IC? It is IC, isn't it?
IC.
IC, ICA, IC and ICA school year slash school calendar. And Bill is going to explain what this is and why.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Seaver, Chief Human Resources Officer. Uh, so there's two parts. One's about the calendar policy, uh, recommended change. And then just getting an update of where we're at with the calendar committee and the meetings that we have scheduled. So there's only one change. In, in the policy, it says by October and we're just making a recommendation to reflect current practice because it's December. So it's a little difficult to go through the process, get feedback from the community and then bring it back to the board for discussion and then to a vote. So if, if you look at, part of what the presentation goes over, like, our first meeting is September 12th. And then if, if we get through everything we need to do and a recommendation of the board, it's, it's going to be November 1st for a board study session and then November 15th. So that's extremely difficult when it's October. So it's tough to start that at the beginning of the year and, and it's better, you know, instead of going into like January, February, or March, the quicker you can make a decision about a calendar, it gives the community an opportunity to understand what the upcoming calendar. So plans that they make with their family and things like that would be a huge, uh, recommendation. So basically, we're just making a recommendation to, uh, change October to December.
Okay.
So I'll pause there and can I answer any questions, questions around that piece?
Amy?
No. Thank you.
Great.
You answered the question, I see.
Perfect.
Is the question just specific to the change or, or to the rest of the?
No, ju- just to the change of the board policy.
Okay.
Okay, so second part.
Oh, Alexandra, did you have a question? And you're on the calendars committee, so I thought I should be sure that, that's you.
And at the last board meeting, she had excitement about that, so we're excited.
Yeah.
Excited.
You're thinking and waiting for your first time. Okay.
Uh, yeah, yep, if you just go. Yeah, we're on the next one. Yep. So the calendar committee meeting dates are there. It's on Tuesday, September 12th, 1926, October 3rd, 10th, 1724. That gives about seven meetings. And then, like I said, going to the board study session November 1st and then a vote for November 15th. Yep, next one. And here are the lucky selected members for the calendar committee. So.
Doesn't change much.
Yeah, so I won't read it, like, there's new people coming in and out. But, but basically the selection is people that have been on the committee, like we've said, we send an invite to everybody. So at times, you know, you hear people complain, oh, I'm on the calendar committee. But then when you send an invite saying, do you want to return on the calendar committee, everybody's like, yes. So it's a, a lively, a lively committee.
You say that.
It, it's. It's fun. It's like a great puzzle. It's a great puzzle on how to, how to match a calendar for student achievement. So the idea is we create a two-year calendar. You know, that explains why the extension of the date is helpful because once you get the one calendar done and then you start working on the second one, so 24, 25 and then 25, 26. So this is the year, so I've been involved with calendar committee for the last nine years. So thi- this is the year to give feedback from the community, so we'll develop a survey. Uh, the committee will develop the survey, uh, there's a lot of different recommendations. There's a lot of examples of surveys that have gone out to communities from other districts. So we'll get that out and then we'll review, typically we review, um, surrounding districts' calendar and then we're in compliance with Colorado state law. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Any further questions on calendar? Start with Don?
Could you go back to the slide that has the list of the people who were on the calendar committee? Okay. Thank you, because I only saw the first column and I thought there don't appear to be any teachers on the committee and I didn't have, have a chance.
There are.
When I went through it the first time to see that there are indeed teachers on the committee because I think that's important. Thank you.
Kathy?
My only question is if I'm reading this right, is, it says, um, three parents. So my question is, the way I'm reading this, it looks like we do have parents, but they also work for the district. Is there no thought or?
So, so there is thought be, because currently we're getting parents and can, community members on it.
Oh, so this is not.
Yeah, this, this is as of right now, because our first meeting is in, for the following couple of weeks, so.
Generally, somebody steps forward.
Yes.
Couple of people do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alexandra, any more questions?
How excited are you?
I am so excited. Well, good.
It's going to be a great time.
I have the best. Thank you very much, Bill. All right, item, uh, 4.3, the first policy reading of JFBA and JFBB and regulation JFBA and JFBB dash R. I get that all right?
Um, this is on, uh, choice enrollment.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the school board, Melissa Schneider, Chief Academic Officer. With me, I have Carrie Bartman, our Director of Assessment and Evaluation. Tonight, we bring to you a revision on our policy JFBA slash JFBB and its accompanying regulation document. This is primarily just to update us and keep us current with our surrounding school districts, but I will let Carrie dig into it and tell you just a little bit more.
Yes, good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer. Uh, tonight in our revision to these policies, uh, we focus, um, on three different areas. Actually, it falls in all four, but I chose three for this one, um, to work on, um, providing accurate enrollment information and being inclusive, um, to all of the district and surrounding areas. And also, um, in the hopes that we have the appropriate number of staff hired by the beginning of the school year and the resources allocated for all of the funding needed for our buildings each year. So in looking at the policies, uh, the overall choice enrollment policy, JFBA and JFBB, we didn't make mu- many changes other than just some wording, um, using, the policy had shown attendance area and we actually have changed it to boundary area. And so when you're talking about different boundaries that the kids fall in, uh, that is the language that we're using frequently now. And so when you look at the first policy, really it is just revision around just updating the terminology that we've been using. On policy two, with the revision side, JFBA and JFBB dash R, the biggest piece that we changed is if you look on page two of that, is the entire timeline. And so in the past, we have had our choice enrollment round one open the Monday after Thanksgiving break when we come back. And then that goes through our holiday break and ending in January. What we found is a lot of families go on vacation. There's a lot going on throughout that time period and so we decided to move that forward or posing, proposing to you to move that forward to the first school day in November and leaving our first round of choice enrollment open until that last day in December. So giving a full six weeks for that round of enrollment to be open. And then it will close and when we come back from holiday break, uh, everything will open for choice, choice enrollment round one. Uh, schools will begin their offering of seats, the lottery will take place, et cetera. And so that's the biggest change that, uh, we have for you this evening. Many surrounding districts open that first Monday, um, in November. And so we're also competitive with what the surrounding districts in our area are doing. And so basically, we're, we just, uh, looked, looked and surveyed all the different areas and are hoping to be as competitive with whomever would love to join our school district each year. And do you have any questions for Melissa?
Stu, we'll start with you.
Thank you. You covered the question I sent you.
Kathy?
I don't think so.
Alexandra?
I do have a question because I think your timing is wrong. On page one of six, where you say round two's application window begins after the release of round one's lottery results and concludes on the second Friday in May of the next school year.
That's correct.
Which, that means the next school year means for like 23, 24, the next school year is 2025?
Yes.
Okay, so then explain that to me.
Sure, so, once that opens, kids can continue to choice to different schools if they wish. And so you have to leave that open for the entire year. So instead of having them move in the following year, if, as seats are opened in different buildings, they, they will continue having that opportunity to move, let's say, from Thompson Valley in November. If something would open, they could move to Loveland High. And so the, the choice enrollment window for round two stays open the entire year so that kids can continually have that process available to them.
Okay, and so then it overlaps with round one for a period of time?
It will for the following year, yes, but they are still choicing to that same school year. So when it ends, then they would have to reapply for the following year if they wanted to. I know, I would, I could draw it out for you. I know that's hard to understand, but basically it's, we, we leave window two open for the entire next year in case any parent, family, member, student chooses to choice to a different school.
Okay, okay.
Amy? Don? Only question I have, I had, never mind, it's gone. It was there as I started to speak and it's gone. So, um, I'll ask it when I get it. I'll send you an email when it's up.
Yeah, please do.
Oh, no, see, I came back and I. Are there students that really will do choice enrollment two or three times, just hopping schools till they find the best campus?
Yes, and they also have the opportunity to apply to multiple schools. So they, they'll put their first through third options down. So depending on where they are offered a seat, if, let's say, they're offered a seat at their second choice, they would still be, um, available to take their first choice when a seat would be open to them.
So they can't just dabble in and out of schools?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what.
Once, once parents or once families are offered a seat, it basically negates the rest of the options. Cause they'll say, yes, I'll take the seat at Loveland High School.
Okay, that's where, where that's the question is.
Yes, they can't hop around without reapplying, yep.
So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, 4.4 is the bond approval for administration building asphalt. Did I say that right? For parking lot.
That's right.
Good evening, Madam President, Word Education. Dr. Schaefer. Todd Pecone, Chief Operations Officer, tonight, have a quick discussion item, well, I'm assuming it's quick. On a board-approved, recommended contract for repairing asphalt at the admin building. So the work is actually a part of the 2018 bond. We're getting around now to the end of the bond and making sure we're cleaning up all the projects that are outstanding. So this work is in association with that. So the proposal is $107,000 to Gold's Asphalt Company, which they will provide general overlay and repairs to the admin parking lot. So the condition of it is a little better than what it is now. So it'll go, basically, this, the main lot, the visitor's loop, not the far south lot, where there's a lot of maintenance parking. But everything to the north of that would be. So today's discussion is just if there's any questions about the proposed contract for that scope work. And this will also be a report to the CBOT Committee to show that we talked about this, and they'll also confirm that it is in alignment with our bond language. So, that's what I had.
Questions? You start with Nancy this time.
My only question was really, as far as parking lots go, and I understand that you're trying to align this with the bond. Are there school parking lots that are also in need of asphalt? That, I'm, I'm just wondering if we would prioritize those over the admin, if there are any.
There are, are the needs, yes. The challenge is, if we don't do something now with admin, the repair in two, three years will be three times what it is now. So, it's at the point now to just protect it, repair what we can, protect it, to not further delay a larger cost.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Nobody sent you their repair bill yet on their car, have they?
Nope. I wasn't gonna put that out there.
Alexandra?
Could we just do a swimming pool in one of the holes instead? Because that sounds fun.
If we wait a little bit, we can get, well, we can get there.
You know, where we're at, so thank you.
Stu? Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
All right, um, four point five, is the energy performance update and utility contract? Todd?
I'm gonna stand here.
Okay, and introduce.
Yes.
Okay.
Kristen and Melissa, as they come up to present.
Do you want us to turn around and face up?
We're just gonna present from the back, that's okay.
It's a nice little stage.
Oh, great, you have it up.
Yeah, that's it as well.
Yeah.
Hold just the reins.
Welcome.
All right. Well, good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer. I'm Kristen Matigi, Director of Operations, and have Melissa Carroll here, our Energy Resource Manager. So we're gonna kind of tag-team the presentation a little bit. So tonight, we're here to talk about an energy performance contract, as well as provide some updates from our Energy Resource Department. Starting with our connection to Strive 2025, two point one. So within this work in the TSD Sustainability Management Plan, we have a strong focus on student engagement, including projects, presentations, field trips that Melissa spearheads, and is amazing out in the schools. Also, four point one, so we're tracking utility usage. So we can continue to support our schools with appropriate resources, as well as look for ways to reduce our use, to be efficient with our budget. Melissa does presentations with each of our building leaders to talk about what that usage is within the buildings, looking at different ways that they can perhaps reduce, as well as what we're tracking at the district level as well. Um, sorry, if you come back. And also, what we're talking about specifically tonight as well, is some efficiency upgrades that will be identified and addressed through the energy, energy performance contract. That can result in long-term savings as well. So just a quick recap on our Sustainability Management Plan. I'm not gonna read through this. But that was something that was implemented back in 2021. We're continuing to make progress on goals, both on the behavioral side, as well as bigger district projects. So, with that being said, additional steps do need to be taken to, to tackle some of these bigger goals, such as renewable energy. That was one of the elements within the energy section in our Sustainability Management Plan. So, one of the things that we've talked about in the past is harnessing the power of the sun. So looking at solar potential within our district buildings, our schools, and analyzing, does that make sense? Where does that make sense? We've kind of explored different options. And working through an energy performance contract is kind of where we've landed with support from our, support from the Colorado Energy Office as well. So, we've been on, I guess, exploring energy performance contracting, I don't know, for the past year, year and a half? Two years, Gordon, I don't know how many conversations we've had about this, five years? It's come a long way in the, in the past 20 years, with backing from the Colorado Energy Office, starting in 2018, I believe. So this is a model for funding and implementing capital improvement upgrades by using future cost savings. So it's the financing piece with guaranteed savings from the, the upgrades that are put in place to actually fund that infrastructure. And that can, it's not only just focusing on those utility savings, but it's also other upgrades that we can do to our schools. I know I've talked to this group several times about those capital needs that we have. So it's really linking both of those things together. There's a kind of five-step process that we've been working our way through, starting with the Colorado Energy Office, meeting with them, working through a MOU, in that this is a process that we're going to be exploring. The next step was ESCO selection. So that's a energy service company. And so we went through an RFP process with our procurement department to select pre-approved vendors from the Colorado Energy Office. So again, I just keep saying that, but it's a really standardized way of exploring this. So, Schneider Electric is who was selected, and we've got Will and Will back there. Makes it easy. From Schneider Electric, Schneider Electric that we've been working with. So they've come out, working with Melissa, just doing a quick analysis of our schools in order to help us kind of hone in on where those locations might make the most sense to move for, forward with projects. So the next step is then to sign an investment-grade audit contract. So this is kind of the first point where we really have some skin in the game. These are very detailed analyses of our district buildings, where they're working through a process to identify what those energy-saving projects might be, and what that looks like. So with that, that does cost, cost dollars. And they can be wrapped into the project if we choose to move forward with that. So we'll get to that a little bit on the next, next slide. And then, there's also steps beyond that, which we'll come back to the board, you know, as we move, move forward with this process. But after that, we would like to move forward with projects, you know, implement them, of course. Those savings are guaranteed, and there's also a measurement and verification process in place for three years. Three, five years, so. So this is kind of that overall implementation and process that is put forth by the Colorado Energy Office. So the investment-grade audit, that's actually a deliverable that we would get at the end of that process. It's a detailed audit of building energy and water use systems, to determine projects that we could move forward, actual projects that we could move forward with. And that's what creates those projects for the energy performance contract. The IGA or investment-grade audit, I know IGA also means something else. In this case, it's investment-grade audit. That fee is set forth by the Colorado Energy Office. So that's standardized based on square foot, distance from their office, all of those kinds of things. So if we were to, after that, deliverable, choose to move forward with those projects, that would be wrapped into there. So there wouldn't be something where we're having to fund that out of our general fund or capital dollars. So, like I said, we went through quite a process with Schneider. They went to each of our buildings, made recommendations on, you know, just at that first walk-through, where they see some opportunities for projects, whether that's lighting, maybe that's boiler replacement, water heaters, things like that. And then we went through, we want to make sure that this is something that we're all comfortable with in moving forward. So kind of a testing this process for Thompson. It's been successful in a number of other districts throughout the state. We've had lots of conversations with them as well. And also, it's something new for Thompson that we're looking at. So we wanted to start smaller with this first, first stage. So we wanted to look at representation of each school level, so looking at elementary schools, middle schools, high school, to see what that would look like for each of those. Also, it's important to us that we have geographical representation. We also looked at socioeconomic status of different schools as well, of making sure that we're, you know, touching different parts of our district, different age buildings, things like that. And then also wanted a wide-selection project opportunities, again, kind of that, seeing what this looks like in, in implementation, if that is what we choose to do. So these were eight locations that were identified that we would like to move forward with for the investment-grade audit. Right there, and there is the investment-grade audit fee for each of them. And on the far right side, you can see projects that we anticipate would be explored. And then, or would, would be potential projects that would move forward after the investment-grade audit. So we, solar is one of the things that we have talked about, HVAC, lighting is a huge one. There's a big return on investment in upgrading our lights. You can see through here, so it's based on square footage, and then you can also see Winona is a zero-dollar IGA fee. So that's one where they didn't see as many opportunities necessarily in HVAC or more of other elements of infrastructure. So it's really lighting, and that's not something that they would charge for, looking at, yes, you need to replace lights. You know, there's different levels of how detailed that analysis would be. So we wanted to include kind of different levels, essentially, of that analysis. So that total comes out to $84,564. That would be potential district money on the line, essentially, where if we didn't move forward with the project, we would pay that, and we would get the deliverable of very detailed analysis of how to move forward with those energy projects. Also, that second column there, potential year-one savings, so if we implemented these, this is an estimate that Schneider put together for us of what we would expect to see in energy savings for that first year. So next step for this process in particular is to approve the contract for the investment-grade audit of that $84,564. Within the packet, I included a draft contract. That's being reviewed by legal as well. It's the Colorado Energy Office template. So they have vetted that, and then also, we're vetting it through our legal team as well. So I just want to pause there. I know, not during questions in between, but we're taking kind of a hard turn here. So I just want to see if there's questions on this first.
Question?
No.
Over here. No?
I do have a question. Kristen, why would we not move forward?
That's a great question.
Thank you. Can you have an answer?
I think this is a great program, so I don't have an answer for that. I think it's a great way to get infrastructure upgrades, and really focus on energy savings. Because when we look at other infrastructure upgrades, we're looking at making sure things keep running. This is a way that we can do that, and focus on those areas to get that, that payback. It's not necessarily a payback, it's, it's cost aversion, rates continue to climb. So it's cost aversion of how we're keeping that money within the district.
Thanks.
I have a couple, so I'll probably just ask the one first. So, it sounds like we would sign this, or vote on this next meeting. And then, in reading the IGA, we would need to pay the $84,000 at some point in this fiscal year, because it says clearly it's not a multi-year contract. So, if it's not multi-year, and we do go ahead and sign it and pay it, then that means what if we decide to move forward with their recommendations for improvements and financing? Okay.
If I may, Madam President.
Of course.
Now, I've gotta collect my thoughts. It must be contagious.
I'm sorry.
The intent behind the $84,000 commitment is only if the, the results of the audit are presented to us, and the board elects not to pursue any of those projects. So then, the district would owe $84,000 for the services that are provided, which is that extensive for the IGA, if I am using that acronym correctly in this ten, in this sense. If, if the board elects to move forward with these projects, then there would be, the cost of that, of that $84,000 would be wrapped into the overall financing, which is a multi-year obligation for the district, probably a 20-year financing arrangement, with the intent being not dissimilar to what we've done with the, the funds, with the COPs that we've used for the High Plains construction in the addition, that there's guaranteed energy savings, energy cost savings, that are used then to service that debt over that 20-year period. So, to me, the, the real compelling part of this, and I've been, I've had discussions, presentations, a lot of things over the last 20 years with these programs. Really, the big thing that has, has made me change in my mindset is the full faith and credit of the Colorado Energy Department standing behind this, guaranteeing those savings. So, they are thoroughly vetting people like our friends from Schneider that can go out and bid on this, this work, that they know what they're doing and are realistic in their projected savings. And then, whatever savings we have are used to satisfy the debt on that, that capital commitment that the, the district would make. And if the savings don't materialize to the level that we're repped and warranted, then the state steps in and guarantees that level of savings. So you would structure the, the district would structure the, the debt, a lease purchase arrangement to use those projected savings over the course of the 20-year period. We would structure the debt appropriately to make sure.
But it would be a COP.
It's similar to a COP, but a, a bit different, but yes, it operates similar to that from a debt standpoint.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Gordon, just lay terms out, so there, there really, almost is an absence of risk, right? So we either realize the, the real savings, or if for whatever reason, the real savings don't materialize, then the state comes in and provides that for us.
That is correct, and try as I can, I can't find the risk that's associated with it.
So no risk, then?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
As the program is currently, and there's, the, the contracts, the, the template of the contract that's attached to the presentation has been thoroughly vetted by legal, actually, our legal has worked on, our legal, the, for our legal firm has worked on several of these arrangements, or these deals around the state as well.
And it's really, just to clarify, it's Schneider who's really on the, on the hook. So if their project doesn't produce the energy savings that they said it would, they're paying for it. Not the Energy Office, just to clarify that piece. So they want to do a really good job.
Well, you know, it just, if we just think about where all of our students are, where our families are, where our kids are, and what our focus is, or should be, for where we live, why would we not do it? Just kind of where I'm at with this. Okay, is there more?
Yes, I'm gonna turn it over to Melissa now, just to give a happy update.
You can stay. You can't, you don't have to give up.
Well, I wanted to point to some things.
Oh, okay.
Just makes it a little bit easier than just being like, oh, just look the left, for sure. Oh, yes, nice obstacle course.
Thank you.
All right. So, we just talked about this great project that we're working on, and now we're gonna talk about why it's important. So, every year, I give you an update on where we are in our utility uses and trends, and that's where we are today. So, looking at the last five years, first looking at our water use. Our first graphs here are gonna be our monthly uses over those last five years, and then the other graphs will be our annual cumulative uses. The one thing that's different about our water uses graph is that our cumulative will be on a calendar year, while all of the other monthlies and all of the other annuals will also be on fiscal year. And that's just because of the way that the water world works. So, the big things to point out here is that, you can obviously see here, in the annual trend, everything is increasing in terms of water use, which makes a lot of sense in terms of the fact of droughts, heat increases, and all of this. heat increases and all of this. And you'll notice here that this is twenty twenty two, so this does not incorporate all of the rain that we've had this year. So we will probably see a bit of a drop next year in this, which is nice. The other things to note is that in our indoor water use, so we had our two COVID years here. We had reduced occupancy in the building, so less water being used in the buildings. But here in twenty twenty two, we are back to where we were previously. So again, this is important because this really shows that we need to be improving not only our infrastructure, which is what the EPC is for, but also our behavioral side of things. So getting kids to turn off the water, getting the custodians to turn in their work orders, things like that. All right, go to the next one. So electricity is also very similar, where you can see a nice beautiful drop in electricity during COVID. You can also, the other big thing to point out here is that in the last two years, we've been very steady in terms of our electricity use, but it is higher than all of the other years. So again, the energy performance contract is going to really impact this. This is really where we're going to see most of that savings from all those lighting improvements because lighting is expensive to upgrade, but it really does have a really big impact. Natural gas, again, similar stories here. The big difference with natural gas is that it's highly tied to our weather. So when we have a colder year, we're going to be using more energy or natural gas. And when we have a warmer year, we're going to have less. The one thing that this is deceiving of is that when we see this past year, it actually looks like it's didn't peak up quite as high compared to the other years. And I say it's deceiving because as I've been going through the data for each of the individual schools, I found that between about a third and a half of the schools had Februaries that matched their marches, meaning that they were both very low energies or natural gas, which was surprising since February is very cold. And so what turns out is that a lot of our buildings were having HVAC issues during that month. So that has definitely been impacted here, so even though the numbers look beautiful, it is a little deceiving on that side of building comfort.
Not at all.
So now comes the, you know, the big piece that everyone cares about, and those are those costs. So as you can tell, everything has been swooping upward. We have that beautiful spike that we've talked about before from that Texas Energy Breakdown from February twenty twenty one. One of the results of that was that now every time it gets very cold, we get an increased fee. So you can see on these very cold dates, we have very big spikes in those costs. And you can also tell, I'll have a table in the next slide with more of these numbers. But our total costs have also increased, so over here is five million dollars. So it was over three million and now we are approaching five million dollars. So again, this is why it's important that we make this investment now so that we can maybe not fully reduce this, but at least curb it from going much higher. So these are those numbers, you can see how they've increased over time. The big things that I want to direct your attention to here is really looking at the rate increases that we've been seeing. The biggest ones have been with water use, where five years ago we were looking at five point seven eight, and now we're up at seven point five six. So water's becoming more scarce, and so it's very important that we are reducing, that we are conserving because of that in particular. Our electricity cost really has not, that rate really has not been going up very aggressively, but we are still feeling the effects of it. And then lastly, our natural gas, this one has really had, it's almost doubled, or it has doubled. Yeah, it has doubled in the last five years. And so that's really where, when we're looking at our HVAC systems, it's really important that we are improving those with our aging infrastructure. Those have a tendency to all be going out right around the same time because they're all right right around the same age. And that is causing a lot of issues on all fronts. All right. So some projects that we are currently working on this school year to make improvements. I always talk about how we have our systematic improvements, which are those building improvements, infrastructure, and then we also have behavioral, which is more of the people side. So on the systematic improvements, we've been working on upgrading lights. Billery, Mountain View High School auditoriums, both got new house lights this summer, which is really exciting. Administrative buildings, any of the tank toilets that were in there, we get a total of eleven. Those are now all low-flow tank toilets, which is very exciting. We also have our energy performance contract that we talked about, and then faucet aerators, which I've talked about before, where I'm actually been able to get students to come and help me go and change out these faucet areas, which is a really cool experience to get them involved as well. On the behavioral side, constantly going out and doing presentations to students. I've also worked at the PD Day yesterday, talking to staff. So just kind of hitting all of those different areas is really important. Energy challenges are ongoing through Renew Our Schools, which is a local competition program thing. And then also our seventh grade water field trip. So this is what we did last year with Walt Clark. This year, we actually got the city of Loveland volunteered their water treatment plant in addition to their wastewater treatment plant. So Walt Clark, Billery, and Riverview will be going this fall to see water treatment plant, lunch, wastewater treatment. So that's a really great way to kind of get the students more involved. A big thing that also happened this year was we went out to Cottonwood Plains and were able to change out their three grassy areas to low water landscaping. This has been a two-year-long project, getting grants through Colorado Water Conservation Board and Northern Water. This was a really big effort. We actually ended up with over sixty volunteers on the day of planting. June third was very rainy, you guys remember that day? But but we still ended up with over sixty volunteers, which was incredible. If you have an opportunity, go out there and take a look at it, definitely do that. We have now updated the website, so we have information about it. It also has the link to the actual design as well as a link to all of the different plants on there. The intention is that people can go there, learn about these plants, and then if they want to install them in their own house, they can. And then also hoping to use this as a template for other schools as well. I think that's everything.
Yay. Awesome. All right, more questions? More questions for you all good?
You know, I do have one.
I don't know.
I think it was Amy's trying to start. I'm good, you're good. So I'm wondering if the plan that we get would help us actually do district-wide planning for other schools. So it's like a step one, but you know, Winona made it kind of obvious that we need to change our lights out. I'm sure there's other things we'll learn from the experts that might help us say, hey, maybe we could just do this somewhere else without having to go through this rigorous process again. Is that right?
Yeah, absolutely, that's that's one aspect of it. And also the financing portion, you know, we can do additional phases, taking on more kind of chunks of the district. But also that gives us those, we have lots of sister schools and things, so yes.
Thank you.
Not a question, but a comment. First, Kristen, your commitment to the importance of this is really obvious. And since you're tasked with doing this, you come across as a very authentic and sincere speaker on behalf of this. And your enthusiasm is contagious. Talking now to. I would imagine that when you speak to student groups, that they get excited and that's what we want to have happen. And they go home and share with their families and so on. And so hats off to both of you.
Yes.
You are undoubtedly the right people in these two roles moving forward, so good job.
Yes, Nancy had had other questions.
I I'm curious, when I was reading through the presentation, and I actually went all the way back to the September one because I was trying to figure out how did this all get started. There's a lot of emphasis on picking, I think, three schools for solar panels. So I I'm a little concerned of, you know, that's kind of like a big like what if, because we don't know the cost, especially if we're talking about getting the batteries to store the energy, then where do they go? So that's probably the one area. Everything else, you know, like the HVAC, the water, the lights, all makes sense. It's on this big solar panel project, when I look at that, that I have like really big question marks about the costs and how how will that look?
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's a great question. And twenty twenty one is when we issued the Sustainability Management Plan, and that's really our first go at that. So there is some right setting within that. As we explore the schools with Schneider and looking at that solar potential, it's not that we are going to do three no matter what. It's to be smart about that, it may be one, it may be none. That that could be a possibility as well. So it's not that we would move forward just to meet that goal. I think there's definitely some right setting within the Sustainability Management Plan as we go and update that in a couple of years as well. And so we'll be coming back to the board at various points throughout this process just to make sure we're all on the same page and it's making sense.
And I I'm guessing the first six schools audit results will bring forth a lot of answers to what I just.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
All right. Four point six on our agenda is the standard action consent items, and that's that two thing that we see each time, knowing that they will all expand. And this has the personnel recommendations. Packet of the thousand dollars added expenses and all of that. So this is just that section of it that we see all the time. If there's gifts and donations or along that line, that's where that will fit in, so that's all that is. And moving on, since there is no CASB update today, we're going to move into our study session discussion items. And I just am doing a quick check with board members, need to get up in around a minute. Okay, so we're going to take, as you guys get set up and ready, we're going to take about a five-minute break just to get up and move into considering a while. All right, we are going to move into discussion items that are, Kristen has been on their calendar. Was it May, maybe, that you talked about it? And we said wait till fall? So this is from. Just do it out there, okay? No, I'm not chasing you off, I'm just saying.
That's a deep.
How did that sound?
That's part, that's the teacher.
Yes, I love it, I love it, yeah.
That's what we do, that's what we do.
This is Laramo County Health Department, just going to talk with us about health and environment. So I'll turn it over to Tom.
So thank you, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Tom Guzals, I service the Public Health Director for Laramo County Department of Health and Environment. I do appreciate you carving out thirty minutes of time to meet with me. And I do have two of our key staff here, Corey Wilford, who's our Office of Communications and Technology Manager, and our Deputy Public Health Director, Andrea Clement Johnson. So I'll be presenting tonight on the Health Department's role in committing to help to build a more vibrant, resilient, and thriving community throughout Laramo County. Next slide. Oh, no worries. While she's downloading that, we'll talk, oh, there it is, quick. Our mission is working to provide everyone in Laramo County the opportunity for a healthy life. And the key words in that mission statement, one is everyone, and that opportunity for a healthy life. So that's what we're here tonight to talk about. While that's our mission statement, I believe health is something that connects us all. It is a shared value, and we want all of our communities to thrive, for our residents to be healthy, and for our families to prosper. One unique aspect of county health departments in Colorado is we don't have a boundary within the county. So I am your health department, we are your health department. Where like the city has a road and bridge department, so does the county and other cities. Laramo County Health Department is your health department, so we want to serve in that capacity. We work with Dr. Shaper and his team and then all the staff daily, making sure we have a healthy environment for our our youth and students. Real quick, what we're going to talk about, we're going to introduce you to what Public Health three point O is. We're going to talk a lot about that, this concept of health strategist. How does this Public Health three point O benefit the community and Thompson School District? Some of our programming and some of the public health in action. We're really getting into that three point O and that power of partnership that we really want to connect tonight with. Let's talk about how we got here. Well, Public Health one point O started in the late eighteen hundreds. That was really around germ theory, vaccinations, immunizations. We understood germs were spread through water, food, and we had vaccine preventable diseases. So we started working in that capacity back in the early nineteen hundreds. Laramo County had an environmental health specialist and one nurse, and and their jobs were to do that work. And we saw over time, less disease and our life expectancy grew. Well, we jumped to Public Health two point O, that's about the nineteen eighties. That's where we started seeing new emerging issues, chronic diseases such as more heart disease, cancer, and more emerging challenges such as HIV AIDS. So health departments became the safety clinics, safety nets as well, with they kind of build on each other. Since then, things have changed. We've had the Affordable Care Act, we have federally qualified healthcare centers. So public health has evolved to be more proactive in partnering with you. And what it really does is move behind beyond those traditional public health services. Doesn't mean they go away, it means we build upon them, where we're increasing our cross-sector relationships, collaborations, using data more than ever. We're going to talk a lot about data because I know Thompson School District uses a lot of data on your staff or, you know, talking about data when it comes to energy savings and those kind of things. We love to talk about that in those capacities. And convening our partners and exploring possible solutions to complex health problems, being the health strategist. So that's really Public Health three point O. So what do we mean by health strategist? Well, these, that's us, and we're wanting to ensure that the population health activities are targeting community health needs and building effective working relationship and healthcare partnerships and other sectors that affect the social determinants of health. And we're going to talk a lot about the social determinants of health. And what does that mean? And how do we want to be a partner with the school district, the city of Loveland, the town of Berthitt, et cetera, on how we remove some barriers and provide more access for all? So several slides, we're going to be talking about that. You know, familiar issues, clinicals, disease, chronic disease, foodborne illness, parent-child health, clinical services, environmental health, emergency response preparedness and others. Those are unfamiliar programs we have at the Health Department. But when we look at that three point O, we're really wanting to look at income, employment, childcare, whether that's affordability or access or both, as we see in Laramo County. Mental and emotional health issues, transportation, education, access and housing. And how does that play now into this overall health? For example, you look at housing and the housing costs, not only in Laramo County, around us, the state of Colorado, et cetera. We have family members struggling to pay rent, struggling to pay a mortgage, and housing costs continue to rise. How that impacts that community with stress on not only their physical and mental wellbeing? So we know housing impacts our stress and leads to people unhoused. And we're seeing a crisis with our youth who lack regular and adequate nighttime residence. Exciting news with the youth shelter that Thompson's partnering with the Matthews House. That's a solution, but obviously we need to even get more upstream with that as well. Another example is not having enough food to eat. Ten percent of our residents in Laramo County are food insecure. So when we have kids in the classroom hungry, their ability to learn is is difficult. Good news now, we do have free and reduce, or free now, breakfast and lunch. Hopefully that does help. So that policy perhaps will help on that that capacity. And then access to health, the school districts work with our school-based health clinic in Commball with Sunrise Health Clinic. Those are solutions to these challenges, so we applaud the the district for their work on that. And we want to be a partner and support you in any way we can. Where are we going? You know, I I think it's important, stronger connections with civic and community leaders. So we've kicked this, what we're calling tour off, about a couple of weeks ago at the Town of Wellington. We've been in Berthitt, we'll be in thirteen more stops by the end of the year. Actually, it's the first week in January to really get out, hear from our civic and elected boards, understand what the unique challenges are for Thompson School District and other challenges throughout the county. We want to sharpen our focus on proactive solutions, both using qualitative and quantitative data. We need to know the stories as well as the numbers, so we can do a value. We need to know the stories as well as the numbers so we can do evaluations and program enhancements. And a big piece that we're really working on at the Health Department is better outcomes for historically underserved communities and our families. So we know that there are communities that are underserved in Laramo County. And how do we break that down so we meet our mission that everyone has that access to an optimal life? We want to be what we call bridge builders, and we want to be active partners. So how does 3.0 benefit Thompson School District? We can give some examples, but we have a Child Fatality Review Committee. We're looking at what are preventable deaths with our youth. So we'll get into a little bit more of that. Definitely the youth mental health work. It was about sixteen, eighteen months ago, I met with Dr. Schaefer. We sat down and looked at some of the alarming data we're seeing from our emergency departments on youth visits to the emergency room and for the purpose that they're there. Loneliness, isolation, suicide ideology, those kind of things. And from there, the district and Dr. Jennifer over there is doing a great job leading a mental health youth coalition and task force. Those are getting people together, smart minds, to come up with three goals. I think that's a start in that effort. But that again is a data issue where there's a health strategist approach, where we're looking at solutions. And these aren't easy. These are complex. Also, the work about three or four years ago with the lead testing in the schools that you guys conducted. You know, you were one of the first in the state to do that work. But we feel that our youth in these schools are not drinking lead at any one of their phones. So that's a tribute to the good work. Well, we'll talk about health equity, and that's much different than equality. Equality means each individual or group of people is given the same resource or opportunities. Where equity, as you all know, recognizes that each person has different circumstances and allocates the exact resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. So we're really on equity. We want to make sure we're doing the best we can with our policies and decisions that provide a health equity lens to our work. We'll talk a little bit about our work that we're doing at the Health Department. We have our strategic planning and health equity initiatives. This is more of internal work groups that are looking at our process improvements, getting feedback from you, always looking at our vision, direction, and goals. How is that working or not working? Laramo County is a diverse county. Your needs is much different than Pooter School Districts, could be different than Estes Park School Districts. So we want to make sure we understand what those differences are and what are the similarities. And then definitely recommendations for improving that health equity, that big piece, and meeting the diverse needs of our residents. And for your situation, the diverse needs of your students and families. Our Office of Public Health and Planning, that's where all our data and population epidemiology relies on. We've really, since COVID, really kind of built that area up. We've got Dr. Jared Olson, you've all met him before. He's profound at what his work is, but he's the one looking at those trends. What are we seeing health trends throughout our communities? And we see some alarming stats. And we see in some ZIP codes in our county, people live ten years less than other ZIP codes by life expectancy. There's a lot of factors when you overlay that map. It's back to those social determinants of health, access to transportation, access to healthy, fresh foods, economic, you know, the money, those kind of things, access to parks, being able to stay physical. So all of that plays in. It's not one item. It's usually a multiple items. This is where our Community Health Improvement Plan lies, and we're due to update that community plan. And that's will be kicked off to the Board of Health early twenty twenty-four. And many of your staff are involved in that plan because it involves youth. And our youth engagement program, I'd like to give a shout out to the Thompson Teens United, our youth engagement partners with them. They're doing great work on amplifying youth voice around substance misuse, places of belonging. We'll talk more about that. And mental health resources as well as they're bringing a youth perspective to the design of the youth shelters. So great work by our youth that are engaged. Our clinical services certainly low and no cost immunizations for infants, children, adults. Health information on immunizations for international travel. If you're gonna travel around the world for vaccines or preventative medicines. And our sexual reproductive health preventive services. You all know, we do have an office here at two hundred Paradillo at the county office as well, in Fort Collins and Estes Park. So that's where you can access our services. Our parent, child, and family health. One of our favorite programs is our Nurse Family Partnership Program, where we're helping first-time parents be successful. We're support and advice and health information. Our WIC Special Supplemental Nutrition Program for women, infants, and children. We looked at the data today. When you look at Berthitt and Loveland, there are one thousand children that have WIC access benefits in Berthitt and Loveland. So that is a program that's widely used by probably youth around in the Thompson School District. And our HCP program provides info and clear coordination for families of children that have special needs. So really helping them navigate the complicated system we have when you have a child with special needs. Our environmental health, we're always working with the school district on environmental planning, air quality issues. We now have heat day issues that we're dealing with, wastewater, septic, food safety. Our staff are in your cafeterias, working with your cooks and chefs on preparing safe food. And then any pool inspections and aquatic facilities as well. Communical disease, that's been out in the forefront, certainly during COVID. But detection, investigation, and management of communicable disease is a foodborne illness. I would say our communicable disease teams worked with your health facilities teams quite often. They have a meeting set up. It's a kickoff normally going into the seasonal year where we have RSV, influenza, those kind of things, talking about timely information and conditions that might be affecting public health. And our emergency preparedness response, working with your staff on any, whether that's natural, man-made disaster, another pandemic, if that would ever happen again, or just any situation where we're prepared to address that issue. So that's another program we're involved in. And then jumping into, let's talk some of the action when we're looking at the Public Health 3.0. One is our Safe Sleep Campaign. This came out of the Child Fatality Review Committee. Outside of birth defects and premature birth, sudden unexpected infant death is the leading cause of infant mortality in the United States and the leading cause of preventable death among Coloradoans under the age of eighteen. So we initiated a campaign last year under Corey Wilford's leadership, really to look at what we call sleep sacks that are distributed to families at birthing centers so they can help, so there's the co-sleeping situation. There's also health communications on parents that are using substances such as marijuana or alcohol and the risk you have when you co-sleep with the child. These are tragic deaths. So that's on our Safe Sleep website. Also, we kicked off our Health Wellbeing and Resilience Data Dashboard. The website is there, but this is just a wealth of data. And you can get anything on all the social determinants of health. You have them by the nine different categories on there. Some of the highlights are what we've got out of some of the data, whether that's qualitative or quantitative, is forty percent of Laramo County residents worried about affording medical care. So that's typically an access issue. Mental health, childcare access, food, security, housing, transportation, employment, and social environments. We'll talk more about social environments. We're all highlighted in our data dashboard through our Community Health Assessment. As I said, ten percent of Laramo County residents experience food insecurity. That's significant. And the big one we were just talking about, the social environments. But social isolation or lack of social connections presents a risk for poor health. In fact, the U.S. Surgeon General has declared an epidemic on loneliness and isolation in the United States. Over the lifespan, if someone's lonely or isolated, they have a significant risk of premature death of about sixty percent. They put it in terms, I guess we'd understand, it's like smoking fifteen packs of cigarettes a day. So inclusion and community are key when we look at a healthy, vibrant county. So that's something we're really, really focusing on. And what we're seeing with some of the data with our youth, which leads to depression, anxiety, and suicide ideology is the real, real efforts on providing an inclusive community within our school districts, within our towns and cities in the county. So that's something that we're really working on and looking at pro-connection public policies. But that's all on the dashboard. The Community Health Assessment that drives our Community Health Improvement Plan, but you, that's on our website as well. I think you can kind of see the link there. But that talks how income and employment, where we rate with the state, Laramo County compared to the state of Colorado. Thank you. Mental health and housing and housing instability were three of the top priorities that popped out of our Community Health Assessment. Again, there's six other categories that you can filter through through the assessment. One of our pilot projects is really coming out of the data and the work around the youth isolation and loneliness was the youth group out of the Fort Collins area. I walked in the door in two thousand eighteen, appointed by the Board of Health. And it was week one where I heard our youth coalitions want a third space, a safe space for all, where they feel they're included and inclusive. And we were able, working in partnership with the Center for Family Outreach in Fort Collins, Laramo County Board of County Commissioners, Pooter School District, and the city of Fort Collins, to open up a pilot project funded, seed funding through the state justice system. It's called Tac Two One Two. It's youth-driven. This is something we'd like to show the video on, but our goal is to get these throughout the county. Absolutely love to get a couple in Loveland, Estes Park, Berthitt, Wellington, et cetera. So, well, I think we can run it.
So where it was really protected in nature. It was making sure we had clean water and that we had access to vaccines. And it was ensuring that people were protected at the most basic level.
We went down to 3.0. You know, they build upon each other. We're still doing food safety inspection. We're making sure the water's clean. We still vaccinate for a variety of vaccine-related diseases. But now we're looking at how do we become health strategists?
Public Health 3.0 isn't just about responding to crises. It's about anticipating challenges, anticipating health burdens, and being preventative in our approach.
People do see public health at times that they're the enforcers, they're the health inspectors. They're the ones that make you wear a mask during the pandemic. We are some of that, but there's a lot more to what we do in public health.
It's been very exciting to see our youth work really evolve to the next level.
We know that youth mental health is a real challenge in our community, and we really need to step up for our youth and make resources available to them so that they can take charge of their mental health.
I realized how severe the mental health crisis was among teens in Laramo County. And I, as a teen myself, was kind of looking around and saying that I didn't really see too many spaces where I really felt like I could go and totally feel comfortable.
And this project is a long time coming. And the enthusiasm for young people to finally have this place is just through the roof. And it's really, really exciting to see this project come to fruition.
We always needed some place like this. And I feel like when I was struggling or I had friends struggling, we never had a third place. But when it's drug and alcohol free and safe from, you know, beside school or home, because those are always healthy places anyways. And you come here and you see kids bonding. You see kids introducing themselves to each other, playing games, talking to kids they might have not talked to outside of here. And they come and food insecure kids come and feel safe to eat. They come and there's different things to do. So like, you know, you wanna go play video games or you wanna go draw. It's for everybody and anybody. I think that people should come and check this spot out because there's so many opportunities, opportunities to meet new people that you otherwise wouldn't mean. Opportunities to grow and opportunities to kind of like dive into your passions.
I think the most rewarding part of my job is empowering young people and elevating and amplifying their voice and allowing them to execute the vision they see. And so they have a vision for what they want their community to look like in the future. And I'm just really grateful I get to be a part of fostering that vision and that execution.
We know that we can't do this alone. That is an issue that involves many partners in this community, the city, the county, the state. Everybody wants the great things for kids.
How do we get everybody together so we're not duplicating efforts or complimenting efforts? And that's for UCL Public Health. Well, it worked. It's about fifty-fifty. We can get the video, the audio to work. Yeah, that's an exciting pilot project, and we want to be able to get that pilot elsewhere throughout the county. I've got a couple more slides here, and then I'm gonna turn it over to hear from you. It's just, we really want to work together with you, your team here at Thompson School District with clear communication, shared vision and goals, early engagement, and looking at innovative approaches on how we can improve the health and wellbeing of everyone. And we want to be your health strategists. We want to partner with you. We want to hear what your challenges are and then see if we can work together creatively to solve those problems and looking at predominantly what are those social determinants of health. So with that, I'll put it up for questions and comments.
What did we end up? Done, okay. I just want to say Zach specifically has been such a great partner in working with Thompson Teens. And I love like seeing the students' words reflected in your presentation. That doesn't often happen when we adults filter. But you know, you have to boil things down. And so to really hear you championing the things that our Thompson Teens have said are really important is amazing. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, and you're welcome.
Nice.
And Zach is great, and thanks for recognizing him.
He's amazing.
We're fortunate to have him.
All right. Well, indirectly, everything that you talked about relates to our students in one way or another, to some of our students in one way or another. But the discussion about the youth center really resonated with me. A question and then a charge for you. Okay, the question is, I'm assuming that you cooperate with Boys and Girls Club of Laramo County and YMCA. Are there other existing youth programs anywhere in the county that you're working with in addition to those two?
That's a great question. Definitely Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA. And Corey, am I others?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of our, Corey Wilford, I'm the Communications Manager for the Health Department. A lot of our youth work is driven by the youth. And they have five different coalitions that they run throughout the county under Zach's supervision. And so they do work with those partners. They put on events, they invite teams wherever they can find them. We could certainly get with Zach and see if there's any specific work that is being done with the Boys and Girls Club. I know that's something that we heard in Wellington as well. They've got a nice Boys and Girls Club there. And so that is part of what we want to do is to partner all of these serving agencies here.
And then my charge for you is this. Living in the south part of the county, I represent Berthitt. Berthitt doesn't have a Boys and Girls Club. Berthitt doesn't have a YMCA. I really feel that there's a need for some type of a youth center for Berthitt. And if that can happen as a result of cooperation among the other two entities and Laramo County Department of Health, I would like to see that happen. I think we're underserved in the far south part of the county in that regard. And I think there must be solutions to that, so.
I appreciate you.
That's what I have to say.
I appreciate you raising it as an example of where there's an equity, right?
Yes.
Because you're right, Berthitt does not have that resource, and they need one, for sure. I agree. Thank you for that.
Yep.
I'm curious, the one thing that stuck out to me, you talked about the data you were gathering from the ER visits from the youth and that the loneliness and isolation is increasing so much. Do we know what's driving? I mean, I know back when COVID, but we're beyond that. So what's driving that now? Is it still just so much cell phone, YouTube stuff, or is there something else?
That's a wonderful question, and I'm sure Dr. Gunsor has probably caught a bit of information on. But what we're gathering, much of it is bullying, cyberbullying specifically. on, but what we're gathering, much of it is bullying, cyberbullying specifically, that alienates our youth, outcasts, some of those kind of things are big ones. Not maybe in areas where there isn't a club or a niche for that certain individual. And maybe they're not all into sports and athletics or band and those things. So we're finding when there isn't something that interests them, they become isolated and feel kind of outcast. But definitely, we started seeing this trend about 2014. And you can link that a lot to the smartphones and the cyberbullying and then the bullying in general. Certainly got aspirated through COVID. Lesson learned there was, at-home learning was way too difficult for everybody. So that's a lesson learned there. I think ongoing, it's being able to try to figure out what are all the complexities? Why do youths, especially girls, our girls are the ones predominantly going to the ED visit, almost two to one over our boys. And so why is that? What's going on there? I think that's part of the Youth Mental Health Task Force. We're hearing from the youth, why are youth feeling alienated? And then leading to these poor mental health, poor physical health. So I think those are some of the things we've got to peel that onion back to understand and certainly start addressing those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe it's because of my age, but I hear more and more about the loneliness of the adults, the senior citizens, more and more so, and that they become more and more isolated. And I guess I think about, maybe there's ways we can work with the youth to help them reach out to the adults, the grandmas, the grandpas, the whatever type of person that might be able to help. It would be kind of a two-way street as far as the kids that are lonely might have a connection with somebody, and it would help protect some senior citizens who, yeah.
There has been some work around that that's been promising around the Portland, Oregon area of co-generation.
Yeah.
What they were calling. So that is interesting, and you have seen some promising results from that, those efforts.
Yeah. Alexandra?
I think, I mean, I guess I would just say thank you for your work. I definitely appreciate the focus on preventive care and the social determinants of health and stuff like that. And doing, I think there's always more that can be done in all of those areas, for sure, for all of us. And so I like that. I like that.
Thank you.
Can you speak a little bit about gun violence, access to guns with mental health, with youth? With, who, how, with Laramo County Health Department partner with law enforcement? I mean, just, I think that's a big piece with, you know, our youth here in the school district access to firearms.
That's a great question. Thank you for that. We're partnering with the Alliance for Suicide Prevention. They do have gun locks, the small gun safes for handguns, gun locks for shotguns and hunting rifles.
They're free to anyone in my size.
Thank you. They are free to, yeah, no cost. We're also seeing Behavioral Health Services for Laramo County on some of the impact funds around that work. But we definitely see gun and gun acts are a public health threat, especially when we have youth or anybody that's suffering, that access to guns. Scott Smith, the Executive Director for the Alliance for Suicide Prevention, has solid data. When there isn't the access to whatever to commit in that moment, you prevent the suicide, you save a life. So absolutely, gun control, all gun education is very, very key. Emily Humphries with our judicial system is doing quite a campaign. We've got videos out educating folks on them. It is now a state law. You have children in the home, your guns must be locked up. As an active hunter, mine are locked up and the key is lost because of that concern. But yeah, that's a real issue that I think we need to do more work in some areas and making sure that everyone knows that that resource is available at no cost for locking up your guns if you can't afford a gun safe.
Oh, we started with you, didn't we? Do you have anything? Anybody else? This was really beneficial. Thank you very, very much.
Well, thank you for your time and thank you for having us. You got a great staff under Dr. Martin Shakes.
I think we could make some connections with what we hear in our next section on student discipline and behavior. Might be able to make some connections with all of that. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Both of you for helping also. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next piece on our agenda is, I see Melissa's ready. Student Behavior Update. And I think something I saw was just not behavior, but I don't remember what the full title was, but you have a team?
I do, so we're going to make a little book for that.
Okay.
And then I'll go back and take my seat after I do something.
Awesome. Thank you again.
Actually, Joe, there is room for you now.
Here's an empty seat, too. Dr. Schaefer's gone.
Oh, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Tonight, we bring to you a Behavior Update. You might recall that just a few months ago at a study session, we had a similar update. And so we just, we want to come back to you and be able to offer to you kind of some things that have been implemented this year, how it's going. So there may not be a huge amount of change in the information, but we do want to update you nonetheless. And so I'm joined here by several people on my team, as well as Joe Zjansky, Director of Safety and Security under Operations. But I have Sarah Rasmussen, Executive Director of Elementary and Early Childhood, Dr. Jennifer Guffels, who is our Director of Student Success, and Theo Robison, our Executive Director of Secondary and CTE. And so they will kind of toggle between each other and take this presentation. I'm not going to take my seat here, but I'm also available for questions.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Sarah Rasmussen, Executive Director of Elementary Schools. And this evening, as Dr. Schneider said, that we are going to really dig into talking about behavior and discipline. As we know, that when we set up a positive climate culture in our schools, we really are setting up our kids for greater success in academics and in growth. And so when we look at our focus areas, we're looking at inclusive and supportive culture and student achievement. So our agenda, we're going to look at a little bit of data. We are really going back to our layered system of supports, which will sound familiar because this is the format that we followed last spring. We'll talk about professional learning, prevention, intervention, and then provide some time for questions.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Jennifer Guffels here, Director of Student Success. Thank you for having us. So we just wanted to highlight a few celebrations out of some behavior data, as well as some areas for growth when we look back at the last year. So we are very pleased that our expulsion rate has remained low. We have fewer than 10 expulsions during the last school year, which, you know, we of course had very few expulsions during the pandemic lockdown. And we all, you know, experienced students really being challenged with social skills and behavior as they came back into our schools. And we're really proud of our schools for the work that they have done to help us keep those expulsion rates down, because of course, expulsion is the last resort. And we try to use that very sparingly. We also wanted to highlight that, of course, we did see suspension rates go up last year when we compared it to the previous two years. But what probably most folks don't realize is it did not increase beyond pre-pandemic levels and in fact returned to those levels. Now, we would still like to see those numbers come down, but that is, I would consider that a celebration. And then we also wanted to celebrate some data from Joe's side of the team, that we have seen significant reduction in criminal charges over the past years, which is a celebration for all of our students and families. An area for growth that we wanted to highlight is that we're monitoring possible disproportionality in discipline for students of color and students with disabilities. So what we're watching there is, we're talking specifically about exclusionary discipline, so, you know, suspensions and that type of thing. And of course, we do not want disproportionality. So we're monitoring that closely and doing what we can to try to reduce the possibilities that that's the case. I also wanted to share with you, because last spring, we talked about the codes. So when we track discipline, right, the response to challenging student behavior often involves the discipline, some of that discipline is required to be reported to the state. And so that is recorded in our student information system, Infinite Campus, with wonderful support from Kerry Bartman's team. And every year, there's a few little changes from CDE that we have to keep up with. And this one, we were quite pleased to see. So in the past, when we were looking to enter the discipline related to bullying, it was actually a subset of Code 9, detrimental behavior. And you may recall that last spring, we talked about the most common code that is used as detrimental behavior, because basically kind of everything was lumped under there. So there's been a change made that bullying and harassment are their own code, which is Code 11. In addition to that, they have provided us basically clearer guidance on what we would consider harassment. And so it is much more specific about what we would code bullying and what we would code harassment. So it should be much easier, of course, at the state level for them to monitor it. But for us, we're glad to be able to monitor it more closely in our schools, because of course, our schools do not want bullying and harassment occurring. So this is much easier for us to track. So I also just wanted to share that, you know, there's a lot of preventative measures that we're always partnering with our schools around. But sometimes there's just technical pieces that can help things run more smoothly. And so we had a team that worked all last year to work on discipline calibration. And so that team's work led to some training this summer for our school administrators, so that we can be calibrated on what types of behaviors you will respond to and what manner, what level of response, so that that is equitable across our schools. And that will of course be ongoing work, but I was very proud of that team, which was made up of people from many schools and within Learning Services and whatnot, as well as from Kerry Bartman's team to help us with that project. In addition to that, we received some updated information from legal counsel about how to apply the Safe School Statute, which does allow us to deny or revoke admission to students coming into our school district who have significant behavior. It is very, very specific and limited of how we can do this. But we got some updated information about how to do that correctly and properly to both protect our schools, but also respect due process and students needing to be in school, of course. And so we shared that information also with our administrators, and we'll continue to provide ongoing support to understand how and when we might use those processes, including how that might look for students, for instance, who are highly mobile, students with disabilities. So the process is different depending on those different needs. We also clarified for our school administrators, there's a statute that allows us to code some behaviors as habitually disruptive and respond differently from a disciplinary point of view. And so we clarified that for our school administrators, so that if they need that tool, they better understand that and then can reach out to the team for support. And then a pretty major technical update is that we have had to do a workaround for quite some time to gather behavior data from our teachers, you know, something at the classroom level. And we had a wonderful partnership between Learning Services and ITS to use a tool within Infinite Campus that previously would not work for us to do this. So we worked through all of that and got it to work. And so our teachers are now able to enter that information directly into an Infinite Campus with a lot fewer steps, and it goes directly to the school administrators so that they can track it much more easily. And those of us providing support, looking at trends and patterns of what we might need to provide, can also track it more easily. So that just rolled out at the beginning of this school year, so we'll update you later, of course, how that went. But we're very excited about that. And the last thing I wanted to highlight is that similar to that discipline collaboration team, we had a team called our Restorative Discipline Team, and they have created an incredible toolkit that originally was designed to be for school administrators. And the further we got into it, the more I realized that they wanted it to also be available to teachers. And so that actually, that did lengthen the time it would take us to complete it. And then they also requested some additional training to be able to really make sure that that was the highest quality and, you know, evidence-based practices and whatnot. So we're hoping to roll that toolkit out in second semester. Perfect. So we just wanted to highlight, because last time we talked about data, and so we thought, you know, what could we dig into just a little bit more deeply for you all since, you know, after last spring? And we thought it would be helpful for everybody to know that our District Unified Improvement Plan and our schools all include a goal around what you might think of as an affective goal. So something related to student attendance, climate and culture, that sort of thing. And that we also use that, use data to guide all of these tiers of support, right? And so you'll see that from everything from, you know, why is our mobile behavior support team going to go out to a specific school to help a specific student and teacher, all the way to District Unified Improvement Plans. And so we just wanted to highlight again that that data is used every day and it is used in all of the planning, both prevention and response. So our professional learning, of course, is continuing all the time. We are, as educators, we are lifelong learners. So that's a wonderful part of being part of this profession. And so we wanted to make sure that you knew that we are continuing to partner with our schools to make sure there's engaging instruction in our classrooms, because of course, the more engaging the instruction is, the less disruptive behavior will be. My behavior is better when I'm highly engaged. So we know we want that in our classrooms. And then we did the first round of function-based thinking last year with every single school, did a training around that, that a Learning Services team developed. And we are working on part two to take that to another deeper level. So that's coming soon. And then, of course, we are continuing, we're in year two of our Inclusive and Supportive Culture Implementation Teams. And so I wanted to just share a few details about implementation teams with you. And then we are, soon, we'll get to the part where Theo and Sarah are going to share with you all of these kind of highlights that I'm giving you, how is it looking in our schools. So I wasn't sure how much detail you had on what Inclusive and Supportive Culture Implementation Teams are looking like this year. But this was the original plan, this three- to four-year cycle, where we will engage school teams with facilitated collaboration to do this wonderful work. And we have our same three areas, culturally responsive PBIS, inclusive young school and community partnerships, and inclusive positive attendance. We did part one of CR PBIS last year, because we couldn't do part two until we'd done part one. So now that we're in year two, we now have all four of these sessions happening. And it's really cool work. So we did our day one before school started, and then day two for our schools, there's five days long, is coming up here in just a couple of weeks. And, go ahead, thank you. And so if you're wondering, what is Learning Services doing for our schools through this project? This is how we explain it to our schools. So I'll just give you a moment to look at that. So these are all the considerations. Every time our team comes together to figure out what are we going to, you know, bring to our school teams next, we check to make sure that it meets all of these requirements, as well as others. But, and of course, the last one is extremely important, that we are trying to make sure that what we're doing is practical and the school teams are able to take it back to their schools. The schedule details are this. Because of all of the incredible engaged learning from our school teams last year, we were able to condense the time. And so it's a total of what we call five days. They're not actually a full day in length, but this is how it spreads out over the year. We know we want to get the majority of the information upfront during first semester, so that schools are ready to keep rolling on that. So that's why I said we did day one before school started. Day two is coming up here in September. That's a three-hour session with schools. And then day three, another three-hour session. And then day three, another three-hour session will be in November. The final big learning day of a three-hour session will be in January. And then we'll, um, schools have seven hours of team time that they can use to work in between all of that. And then we all come back together for one hour in May to do, um, kind of a look back to the year program evaluation and a plan for next year.
Are those in person?
Um, no, they're in person. They're all in person this year, yes. Um, and then I also just, I know that we've, we've touched on our Kaiser Permanente Rise Grant. And so, um, we, uh, I wasn't sure if, uh, you knew that we had, um, received a three-year, another three-year round of that. But this year, um, we have been selected to be one of four influencer districts. And so we get to help host learning for other school districts. And like they get to come and check out River View, for instance, and see all the amazing things happening in Thompson School District. And that grant, remember, is working on trauma-informed practices, SEL, um, teacher and student wellbeing, um, that sort of thing. We continue our work on restorative practices, which is embedded within, um, CRPBS Part Two, as well as other areas. Um, our SEL specialists, um, we have only one SEL specialist position we're trying to fill, which is the best we've, place we've been in, uh, from, from the beginning of starting the SEL specialist work. So that's very exciting. And so they continue to help bring professional learning to schools, based on the specific schools that they support. And then we have also continued, um, our plan to offer not only CPI, which is that higher level of, um, response to escalate students into escalation, but the lower level of that, which is verbal and nonverbal de-escalation. So that we are equipping staff with all of the tools and people don't feel like they need to move to a physical response. So every time we offer, um, CPI, we are trying to pair that with an opportunity for people to come in for the verbal, nonverbal.
Okay, so what does this look like in our buildings? And I'll start with, with elementary, going back to engaging instruction. So last, uh, spring, when we talked about this, we were talking about the small group work that has been occurring with literacy instruction and just ensuring that we're engaging our students. This year, um, that, of course, continues. And we are, um, also working with math. So how do we teach math in a way that's engaging for our kids? How do we really utilize our new, um, math programming vision in a way that doesn't, isn't just a page turner, but really helping teachers to understand what does it look like to think critically about math? What does it look like to have students wrestle with, um, mathematical concepts and really engage them in the learning? And, um, we've had an opportunity now to have two full days of math professional learning. And it's been amazing. Yesterday, we spent a good portion of time really talking about, um, how do you do that? How do you engage the students? How do you, how do you have a launch that's set up that really pulls them in and engages them in the content? And then we also talked about what does it look like to have math small groups? And teachers had time to build math menus that would be aligned with their grade level content and standards. And so, uh, that's some of the work that we're still doing around and will continue to do around, um, engaging instruction for our students. And then, um, just talking about the, um, the implementation teams and the work that's been done there. We had an opportunity during our TENS week where building teams shared, they had about an hour or so with their staff to really lay the foundation for the work of the year. So they may choose to bring forward the learning that these teams did last year, or they may choose and set the stage for the work that they're going to jump into this year. So they were able to take a lot of that new learning, um, that they have done and be able to work with staff during TENS week. And then that, that work continues. Specifically, I think about the work that, um, one of our schools has done with how they are shifting the way that they work with families and invite families in. And Lincoln Elementary is the school that I'm speaking of now, where they have chosen to have, they invite families in for learning experiences with their kids. And so they are ga, they are engaging in learning projects. And so the families are actually right alongside helping their students. So they're learning, they're, um, also receiving support. And what does that look like to ask certain questions of your child? And so they're doing it in the moment, but it's just a different way to bring families in and truly engage them in the school day versus kind of that, what could have been a, a sit-and-get type of meeting about here's what we do at Lincoln. But now it's a, come on in and let's, let's do this together. So that's one of the ways that, um, we have seen some of this work really unfold in our schools.
So from the secondary level, one of the things that we focused on, as you know, over the last two years is cooperative learning structures inside of the classrooms. And so one of the things that we did when we came back from our retreat this year was really focus on what's first best instruction needs to look like in the system. And through that, we pulled a lot of Hattie's research. And one of the things that we talked about is how boredom has a negative point four nine effect size on student learning. So we really tried to champion what are some of those strategies that we can use in the classroom that one gets the kids more motivated to be actively engaged in their learning? And then through that conversation, one of the things that we've asked schools to do is really start trying to target things that they figure they wanna eliminate when they do their own calibration within their system based on our, uh, professional practices this year as we transition from seventy percent or from fifty percent to seventy percent. And so through these conversations, one of the things that's been pretty cool to see in some of the schools is that some teachers, um, they're doing the work of having more motivating and engaging lessons for kids. And I'll give you a few examples of some of the things I've seen. So, uh, down in Berth, one of the things that I tried to do is just, when you hear the noise and the joy of learning inside of a classroom setting, that gets my enthusiasm, wanting to walk into that classroom. And so we've seen a pretty cool economic simulation conversation between students. They were really, they're going back and forth and engaging in which is a better structure for economy, capitalism, or a variety of other things, communism and, and just variety of other type of things in the conversation. And just seeing the kids' joy for coming up with their ideas and being argumentative towards each other back and forth, watching them just really be present and, and really a part of the learning has been pretty incredible. And then in a couple of other schools, like at PVS, spent a lot of time so far this school year, and from being in elementary classrooms and seeing really purposeful groupings of kiddos and really some rotation rotations that have a purpose and seeing students say, "Hey, mister, mister, do you wanna know why I'm sitting at this table right here while I have these headphones on?" And just hearing kids explain to me why they're reading the book that they're reading has been pretty powerful to see. And these are kids that are first and second grade. Also something that's pretty cool to see is some activities that people are using called philosophical chairs, where I, um, the noise of that classroom brought me in because they were doing a lesson around is a, uh, content, uh, media influencer, is that a real job? So the relevancy that that has in our kids today and watching enthusiasm has been pretty incredible. And then also they're talking about should kids be paid to learn? Should kids be paid to do well in school? And just seeing kids engage in these type of conversations pushes the point to get rid of the boredom activities that might look like packet work and things of that nature, but really allow our students to be, uh, have some more voice choice and agency and excitement within their learning. So those are just some of the things that I've been able to see. But it's been championed through the work that we started in the beginning of the year and really over the last two years regarding cooperative learning and really challenging ourselves to have more of those, um, learning opportunities that kids are more enthusiastic about. And so one thing that I'm also happy is that we've been collaborating with the PD department to ensure that all of our new teachers on September the 12th and all of our new administrators will go and be able to have some professional learning full day, um, for cooperative learning. And that's gonna be sponsored by one of our own coaches in our district, Sarah Ruder, who's an instructional coach at Winona. So just some of those things that we've been trying to develop over the last couple of years, watching those things slowly but surely come into play. And those are just, uh, some small examples from a tremendous amount of things I've seen. But we see the work happening. And so the number one way to keep, um, our discipline down in our classroom is really through highly engaging lessons in the classroom. Because we all know when students act out, it's either to gain or to avoid something. And typically, it's whatever's happened in the classroom on that day. So the more that we can keep them enthusiastic and engaged, the more likely they'll learn what we're asking them to learn and be able to demonstrate that leader.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, um, last spring, uh, the next area that we reviewed through prevention efforts. And, um, these look familiar because this was the same. And what I wanted to mention about this is that, um, this is all woven into our professional learning. And so when, um, you know, you think of, you know, you think about what Theo's describing, about how we need engaged instruction, um, we also need instruction that is trauma-informed, that we are, people feel confident using restorative practices, we're culturally responsive. We have wonderful partnerships with our families and our communities, so on and so forth. And, uh, so what, what we all are excited to see is as we make sure we have alignment of, across our professional learning, that these prevention efforts, people are feeling more confident, um, about them being part of just everyday school. So that's a, that's very purposeful that the professional learning is designed to help increase these, uh, preventive, um, prevention efforts. And then I, I wanted to just highlight, um, uh, some, some things that are enhanced and new. So we are so, so proud of the fact in Thompson School District that we have full-time counselors in all of our schools, even in our small elementary schools. Like I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of celebrations around, um, keeping those SEL specialist positions filled with outstanding, who are counselors and SEL specialists. I get to have them all in the same room on a regular basis and wow. We, we are a powerful team of people doing great work for kids and families. And then we do have a new position this year, our Suicide Prevention Specialist. And so that was the result of being at a school health professional grant for several years. We didn't get another round of that, but we're using that money differently because we made the decision to, um, fund a suicide prevention specialist that will, uh, make sure that we have aligned, um, prevention efforts in that area for all of our secondary schools. And then, um, I wanted to make sure that Joe could explain what I mean by enhanced as far as campus security is involved.
Yeah, um, we did a study session about this about a month or so ago. It's just the additional folks that we have in our schools, um, that are part of my team, that function in a way of physical security. However, through our academy, um, with Dr. Guthrie's, you know, Theo and Sarah are discussing too, we really will focus on prevention. We really work on if every stu, if you treat every student like a nail and your only tool's a hammer. So we really focus on, don't do that, and that to build relationships and speak with kids. And that's the most effective thing that we've found. So that's what our focus is there and that enhanced staff continues that work.
Okay, so, um, again, what does this actually look like in our schools? We have, um, so we have schools that have taken, you know, these different, um, ideas and really talk to their staff and their community about what are some things that, that are going to work for us? So we have, um, some schools that have decided that they, and this is something that has been shared previously, but they've decided they wanna implement a soft start. So instead of, you know, families dropping off their students and kids are just kind of running around the playground and things happen and, um, we want to create something that's just a little bit more controlled, where it's a little bit more regulated and students have an opportunity to walk into their, um, into their school or into their classroom, depending how various schools have structured it. And then there's a check-in time with an adult so they can actually see how are they doing that morning? And I know that as a principal, I remember kids getting out of their car and I have just heard whatever happened in the car. And they come out crying and they're trying to pull it together. You have another one who comes, you know, bebopping out of the car and it's the opposite. And, and you just don't know. It's just that I happened to see it because I was out there greeting families and, and helping with traffic. And so the soft start is something that has provided some insight for staff to see where each student is coming and entering their day. We also have schools that have implemented, um, structures that might be a little bit, uh, less intimidating for families. So instead of having meetings at the school or having, you know, home visits has been a practice, they're meeting out in the community somewhere. So they are actually, um, working with the family to determine the best place. Is it a park? Is it a coffee shop? And then they will meet the family in that location. I was just over at Nomakwa last week and they are working on attendance as their choice for implementation teamwork. And you walk in and there's a big old banner that's really cool looking. And it's all about attendance and why attendance is important. And they just sent home magnets with, with each student that week about the importance of attendance. And then they're doing, um, they're creating graphs and they're sharing attendance data with families on a regular basis and they're celebrating on a monthly basis. And so they're really trying to do some new things to, um, encourage positive attendance.
So at the secondary level, uh, one of the things that each one of the middle schools or, um, high schools have specifically is an ELO, an extended learning opportunity. Or they have an advisory time where thanks to Dr. Guthrie's work over her time, they've been able to get, uh, resources to better teach SEL inside some of our classes. Another thing that's been pretty cool to see too is, as I kinda go throughout schools and I talk to students is that our StuCOS and programs like that and our 360 Leaders and our webs have been a really good place for students to build relationships with some of our younger students coming in. And I had an opportunity to talk to some of the students that are on our high school student advisory committee that I see now are StuCo leaders. And they say because this opportunity was so cool when I came in, that I had a senior buddy or something like that, this is why I wanna do that now in my senior year. So it's pretty cool to see how that kinda helps the younger generation get some role modeling and some positive peer, uh, reinforcement from some of the older kids in the system. But I think at the secondary level, we have a ton of different things there. But, but I believe the ELO, the advisory and that opportunity and that ELO for students to pick activities that they're truly are engaged in, that they want is fun. And teachers also said they wanted to teach these things because they have a passion for it. Those are some of the things that we've seen be pretty positive. And we can measure that off of the attendance. Like previously, uh, before we had these stronger structures in place, we had lower attendance in some of these courses because kids would just ditch them. But in a few of our schools, originally all the schools that have this in place, they've seen incredible amounts of attendance from our kids in those settings. And then also due to the fact that we're able to touch, I believe it's a point two-five credit to that as well, that also triggers kids coming. So that was some proactive work we did. But, but overall, I feel like we have a lot of strong things that help develop relationships between students to student and then also from the peers to the student. And the more that we can champion those efforts, I think the more we'll see some increases in some of our overall, uh, data overtime in some of our surveys when it relates to sense of belonging and things of that nature.
And this is the last, um, section of updates we have for you. And so, of course, we have professional learning. We do, we have layered supports around prevention and sometimes we need to intervene. So, um, we have been able to maintain our Positive Attendance Team, just a fabulous group of people who are working with our schools, um, to support them with students who are struggling with, uh, attendance and engagement. And we partner with the high school folks at, um, with our stu, our re-engagement specialists at our high schools so that all, all of them are connected and sharing evidence-based practices. Our counselors are absolute masters at intervention and they are intervening through small groups, through individual, through family meetings, uh, all, all sorts of incredible support. We have a new intervention available, um, thanks to, um, two grants. So we have, uh, a team through our School Health Professional Grant, we're calling our Behavioral Interventionists. And they, um, all are licensed mental health providers and they will be supporting our middle schools and providing direct, um, mental health support to, um, students who are referred by the school team. And then they meet with the family to see if the family's interested. And then they are able to have those services for approximately six to ten weeks right in the school, during the school day at no cost to the family. So we're, we're very excited to start rolling that out to our middle schools and that is a three-year grant. And then, uh, we have an additional behavioral interventionist who is a social worker and she is going to be forming a caseload, uh, comprised of students who are struggling with the highest levels of, uh, discipline and behavior needs. So students who, um, may be, uh, and, you know, in the past would have been a kid we were concerned we were headed toward expulsion or students who are involved in law enforcement in the courts and whatnot. We are, she's able to provide wraparound support, which includes, um, family counseling and case management. And so she is also, uh, all up to speed and is gonna be, uh, accepting referrals, primarily from actually the four people in this, this room that are doing this presentation. The referrals will primarily be coming from us because she can only work with so many students at a time. Because if you think about that wraparound support, it's, it's gonna be quite intensive. So we're very excited to have found somebody who's interested in that work. So the first was through the School Health Professional Grant. The second was through the, um, Laramie County Behavioral Health Grant. Obviously amazing support and intervention to our special education team. We have our Mobile Behavior Support Team that supports our elementaries and middle schools and K eights to help with FBA's, behavioral intervention plans, all that. They are fully staffed, um, for the first time. So, uh, those are some hard positions to fill. We have fabulous, fabulous people we found to fill those. So we're getting everybody new on the team up to speed and out in the schools helping. So we're getting everybody new on the team up to speed and out in the schools helping. And then we also wanted to mention that, um, the federal program, state and federal programs team has been moved to student support services. And I, I'm considering that on the intervention list because being able to, um, collaborate and integrate the services across special education, student success and, um, state and federal programs. We really think is going to be better for our students, families and schools. And then, um, Joe, would you like to talk about your coresponders?
Um, as the board is aware, we went from, uh, one team to three in essence. One of them is grant funded and also serves the community of Johnstown, but they're, um, serving Riverview School specifically due to their jurisdiction. However, one is through local police and one is through Blairmore County Sheriff. Should the board have any questions after this presentation specific to their work so far this year? Um, I have one of them in the back, he's providing security to me, so he can answer some questions as well.
And we are very excited, um, that our middle school Carlisle at Walcott Classroom is in year two. We have a new teacher joining us, um, Mr. Dixon is an absolute gem. We are so excited to have him. So they're in year two, we started with students in that classroom for the first day of school for the first time ever. So that was an exciting way to start the year. Um, and then we wanted to make sure that you know that these interventions that, that we talked about last year, SOARs, Sierra School, Hope, the Ferguson, um, Options GED, all of that support and intervention is continuing this year.
So when you talk about intervention at the building level, um, our buildings have student support teams. And so when there are, um, behaviors that surface and the teacher is needing additional support, they have, uh, support teams within the building that can meet, they can look at data and they can talk about different, um, possibilities for that student. We also know that, um, sometimes the needs are greater than that. And so we need to make sure that we're ready and can respond accordingly. And our principals are really great about reaching out when there are situations that they feel they need more support around. And that's where we, we really communicate with Dr. Guffels' team. We also really work with our, um, ESS team because we need to make sure that we're providing them the most appropriate supports. And, um, at that point, there's usually, um, a team, if it's Dr. Guffels, her team is often kind of, she deploys the right people or person over there to really, um, see what the, um, what the behavior is. See if they've really looked at the function of that behavior because we know that behavior is a form of communication. And so really making sure that it's addressed in a way that is going to meet the student needs. Families are definitely a part of this process because we want to make sure that they are also very, um, much in the know about what's going on, what we're seeing and a partner in, in the process. So when we talk about intervention, that having the family onboard, making sure we have the right people to really, um, create the best plan for that student is critical.
So at the secondary level, one of the things that's unique due to the fact that our teachers have two plan periods is that they have time to really talk to, talk to, uh, their teams to have a better understanding of when a student may not be successful, what might be working, uh, in classes where the student has shown some success. So I've been able to see some evidence over that throughout the school year so far. Then another thing, when I think about some of the interventions we have like the SOARs program and Ferguson Options, like the tremendous amount of work that those programs do to support students and families and to work with schools to ensure once we see, uh, students may not be, um, getting their needs met at their comprehensive school location, then those transitions have been a lot more smooth thanks to whether it's intensive discipline or relationships that principals have, principal to principal and communication with families to make that transition happen seamlessly has been pretty positive. But one of the things that through the implementation teamwork at the secondary level, there's been a tremendous focus also on, uh, positive or PBIS. So that positive behavior and intervention support system being built. And so therefore we're able to see how can we actually give that tangible or that verbal reinforcement to our kiddos to help them feel like they're being successful. So that's part of that functional behavior assessment work as well that we've been able to develop at the secondary level more deeply with Dr. Guffels' leadership. So we've seen several things that we put in place and several alternatives that we have for kids where we really are seeing that we have what it needs to help every student be successful. And so we just want to keep championing what those things are and working with our buildings to make sure kids have access to those sorts of things.
Not sure where we start this time, I've lost track.
We'll start over with Alexandra.
Do you want me to start?
Sure.
All right.
Go for it, yeah.
I have a question and, and a request. Very beginning of your presentation, you talk about tracking disabilities, uh, as they relate to disproportionality. Are you talking about all kinds of disabilities, physical, emotional, social, et cetera?
So specifically we track students who have five oh four plans or AEP plans.
Okay. And then my request has to do with that highly competitive grant, uh, that we were one of four districts to get. I'd be very interested, and I don't know whether my board colleagues would be or not, to see, um, really a summary of contents of that grant, just what that grant is intended for.
That's that RISE grant that I was, yes. And I think it would be really worthwhile if you could just school by school, tell us what, what their focus was. It would be helpful.
Yes, that, that is the grant I'm talking about. And then to go a little bit further, what we've done thus far, I know we got the grant was the last spring. So we haven't had it for very long, but I, but knowing you and your team, I'm sure you've gone into action and you've already accomplished some things that I would like to know about. So just kind of a summary of the contents of, of the RISE grant and then what you've done so far.
Absolutely, yeah, and I would add, so this is actually the third time we're able to apply for this grant. Each time it's three years. And what's different this year, this time is that, um, we didn't think we could apply because we've already gotten it twice. So we already had it for six years and, and what we did each round was different depending on what we saw in the needs of our school. But this year they actually asked us to come back in and apply and, and as be, and to be a, uh, influencer district. And so, um, so it was really an honor for Thompson School District to be asked that, so.
And if you want to throw in some of the things that happened during the first two cycles, that's fine. But I'd be interested in knowing what we've already done as an influencer district.
Thank you. Nancy?
It was, there was so much information there and I kept having questions or thoughts. And then there's just so much here. So I like to say is, um, this was a really good presentation and I can tell you guys are really doing some really good work. And, um, I should have probably written down every thought that popped into my head, but then we might be here a long while or so. But anyway, great job and thank you.
It's so important for our kids that we have this in place and that we are addressing all the pieces because it's the only way we're going to reach what we want to reach. So, thank you. Alexandra?
So I have one question also at the beginning. Under the professional learning, you talked about function-based thinking, part two coming soon. Can you talk a little bit more about what that is?
Sure, so, um, the first round, uh, was actually, was something that we've been working on anyway. And then there was a new requirement from CDE that all licensed staff, um, in order to maintain that, had to get this type of training. And so that was able, that kind of gave us an opening to do this, um, district-wide and more formally. And so it was working with staff to understand the, the, the kind of basics of that when, that behaviors have functions and that if we think about behavior as communication, then we can understand it and both prevent and respond it in very different ways than if we take it personally, for instance. Or feel like, um, this, you know, the, the student is, um, you know, being disrespectful or doesn't like me or whatnot. Those are rarely actually functions of behavior. And when we get tied up in those, those emotional reactions to behavior, we don't, um, create prevention or respond as well in, um, ways to actually diminish the behavior from happening. So we did round one of just that really fundamental understanding of thinking about behaviors, communication and the functions of behavior. And then round two will be then, ha- when, once you have that understanding, then how do you respond? So that's really getting into, um, that, the behavior intervention that results from thinking of behavior as a function of communication. Amy?
Um, just all of this is very, um, good work. It's very, you know, everything's just, um, intertwined. I mean, like Tom Gonzalez was just talking about loneliness and, you know, getting kids engaged by, you know, having purposeful, um, and, uh, engaging, you know, lessons for the kids that that, you know, and then the loneliness, mental health, isolation. So it's all, I mean, everything that we've talked about tonight just really, um, is all interrelated. And so just thank you for the, um, the work that you do. And I, I also appreciate, um, you being in the classrooms, you know, like at the high level with, hey, mister man, you know, do you want a good drink? And so, I mean, this, you know, so I, I know that, you know, you're up here making the policies and recommendations and all of this, but you're also there on the front line and that's, that's what counts is to really see what's going on. And so, um, it's all just, um, yeah, good work is an understatement, but thank you.
First I said something very similar to what I was going to say. Which is that everything in here is increasing that connection, right? And, um, from the very beginning, I noticed how much of it was staff-focused, which is great because I don't know how many times last year we talked about how much we really need to support the adults. That it's the adults that are needing the resources to feel supported, to know what to do, to, to have help when they need it. And that's all, you know, so every piece of this is like that. But, you know, that, back to that, like the full picture of it, is that all of that's increasing that connection, right? So it's can be increasing the connection with the adults and the kids and the adults and each other and their community. And, um, you know, that helps everyone feel valued. All of this is really valuing. I am pretty freaking happy about the idea that we're talking about discipline and all I have is, is praise and notes about how much I want to shout about some of the new things that we're doing now that I understand them better. I don't think any of us knew that that was possible. So amazing to, um, to really have so many comprehensive things that just make me really happy and we know it's saving lives.
Thank you, thank you, all, all of you. All of you that had to stick around all evening. Yeah, all of you that, everybody here. Are there any future topics for the board's consideration? We did our tally list for, um, our tally list for, uh, Floralee. Did that help you, the tally list, okay? And I saw it somewhere.
This was the first one or?
Yeah, it was on the list, so it was there.
And, um, so I'm going to adjourn our meeting at, um, seven fifty.
Meeting's adjourned.